All right, it is 4:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. For public information, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioner's Room. Anybody who wants to take the time to go back and read it, roll call please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reizig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Could we all stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic full of its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we do have some visitors here this evening. I want to remind everybody that if you do wish to address the Board, that we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address so that I could get onto the tape so that we know who you are and what your reason is for being here when that time comes. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please? Any changes? I should say, any changes first?
I have a change.
Oh, you have a change?
Not yours, not the same one.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I want to change on the S D L, instead of the ratification of my signature, it's discuss and consider approval of the special designated license. It's near the end, it looks like.
How do you want it to read?
Pardon me?
How do you want it to read?
Just discuss and consider approval rather than the ratification of my signature.
Any other changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I believe you had a...
That's gonna be on the consent.
That'll be on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any other changes? Not entertain approval for...
I would move approval of the agenda with the one change by the county clerk to change the word ratification to the word approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item, the Board does reserve the right to enter to a closed session at any particular time that we feel is necessary. I don't believe we have anything on tonight's agenda for a closed session. Moving on, we'll do the consent agenda. I would like to, at this time, entertain a motion that we remove claim number 02306381. It is a claim to Gene Rhodes for $14,021.25, so we can discuss that after we remove it from the consent agenda.
You want a motion to...
A motion to...
To pull that?
A motion to pull that from the consent agenda, please.
And discuss it after.
And discuss it afterwards, yes, yes.
I would move we pull that line item off the agenda, or the consent agenda.
I will second that.
Second, is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Okay. At that time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus that claim number.
Okay. I need to enter that into the system.
Excuse me?
I don't have that in here. If you want to vote?
Yeah.
I need to add it.
Well, we're gonna vote on the... On this motion that we just made, you mean?
You made a motion where I was prepared to accept the whole consent agenda, so now you made another motion?
To pull that, pull that item.
Right, so I don't have that item on here.
Okay, so what do you need to do to put it on there?
I need time to add it.
She's changing it on her system. She's just changing her system.
Kurt, can you do me a favor and get somebody from maintenance to open this wall? They're doing it now, thank you very much. Get some more seating. Okay.
Ready for a motion?
I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the deletion of the item that we've mentioned.
I move approval of the consent agenda less the one claim that we took off.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Okay, now we'll go back to the discussion on the claim. Lisa, I'll let you...
I'm sorry, what's that?
The claim that we pulled?
Yes.
Rhodes, I'll let you discuss that.
Oh, we're gonna discuss it?
Oh, we pulled it, yes. We either deny it, or we put it back in the claims, one of the two.
Okay, the discussion comes because this was a bill submitted by the county court, Diane Lana in particular, not that I'm trying to pull her out, but I know she's here. And it includes dates of service from 2017 to 2019, which we feel is getting... It's very dated, that's stale dated information. Don't know if she's already maybe billed for this, and don't think that's quite a good liability for the county, because we don't know how many other outstanding issues she may have lying out there and gonna turn around and give us another $10,000 bill. We need to know what's happening. You can't budget on stuff that's five years old. Is it, we assume it's legitimate business?
Do we have an explanation of why the bill was so late?
I will defer to Diane. This is not the first late bill we've had, but do you ever have an explanation?
Please do, thank you Diane. Pull the mic down for you.
The only explanation I have is that attorney, this isn't the first time that she's done that. She submits her billing statements, yeah, she does not regularly like the rest of them. We have addressed it with her, so I am gonna... We do double check all of the claims before they are sent over to make sure that they haven't been billed previously. That claim was checked, but I mean, I agree, it shouldn't be so far behind. So we will address this issue with her and try to get an answer as to, you know, why she's submitting them so late, and if we can work out some kind of a solution with her to get them in a more timely manner.
Is she still the county attorney down there?
No, she isn't.
I didn't think so, okay.
Yeah, yeah, she mostly just does court appointments, and I mean, right now with the dire situation that we're in with being, getting court appointed attorneys, I would hate to lose her. So we will address it with her and see if we can get the issue resolved.
Dave, what's your opinion on this?
I heard about it the other night, I don't think I have the bill in front of me, but I don't understand this submitting the bill that goes back, you know, five years. You have cases go on for, you know, it can go on for a long period of time with review hearings every six months, but once the thing is done, well, here's one that was done in February 2019. Yeah, so it's four years down the road. I have actually no explanation for why anyone would bill this way, considering things three, four years after the fact, after the case has been done.
You cannot bill Medicare or Medicaid past a year? So can they truly be expecting us to accept a bill multiple years in arrears? Is it, I'm wondering if it's a statute thing as well?
In an effort to get it resolved in an amicable situation, to possibly again maintain the services that we're receiving, if we let Diane talk with her and see if we can get it ironed out and come up, come with some agreement that would say that they're gonna be submitted in a timely manner and that you guys can decide what that timely manner is?
Yeah, yes.
And bring that back to us prior to the next meeting, and maybe we can... So it sounds like we have approved them in the past that have been substantially late.
Yeah, yes.
But we don't have any recoup of your savings.
And I don't know that we can recoup it, it's just a matter of, you can't budget on, you can't budget on something that you don't know is still sitting out there. And I don't know that we do budget on case-by-case basis, because we don't.
Right, right.
So...
It's just not good business.
You're going to work with her to figure out whether all this is all obviously legitimate, and I'm sure it probably is?
Yes.
And then resubmit it, so at this particular time, we can deny this one and then resubmit it for payment at a future, at a future time?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'll get with, we'll work with her and the judges will address it as well.
Okay.
Yes.
I would entertain, I would entertain a motion to deny this claim, and then we can bring it up again.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Diane.
I'll make a motion to deny this claim, and how would we word that to...
And to review it at a future, at a future meeting.
To review the claim again.
Right. Do we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna take a voice roll call, okay? That took too long to add it for you guys, I'm sorry.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Okay. Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
We didn't really do any discussion before or after the second. I guess I'm just curious why, why we need to review it again, if we're gonna, why we're not just reviewing it now? Why do we have to deny the claim to review it later?
I think probably the, okay, before we do that, just in order to keep, would you rescind your motion, please?
All right, I'll rescind my motion.
Would you rescind this, who seconded it?
I'll rescind the second.
Would you rescind the second, okay. Now, I think Charlie, more than anything else, is to make sure that everything is legitimate on it, and that we didn't, that we're not maybe billing something that we already paid for, that, you know, we're going back here five years, six years on some of it. That hasn't been something that's already been submitted and that we've already paid for. Diane, just going to go back and check to make sure that everything is where it needs to be. And if, and if in fact it is, then we can put it back on the consent agenda and debate for it.
How can you verify that it's actually been done, Diane? How do you, how do you do that? How do you, how do you verify the work's been done?
We keep copies of the claims. We'll have to go back through our records and verify, just to make sure that she didn't double bill for any of it.
Yeah, but how do you verify that she even did the work at all? I mean, how would you even know?
Well, she, she's, normally they spend, I have my billing statement with it showing the hours they spent. I mean, I can verify that those were cases that she was appointed on.
I would ask that you keep track of what time you have on reviewing that bill, and we'll deduct that from that bill as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'll go back and check again, and we'll talk with her.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain another motion then, please, and then we'll still discuss it.
I make a motion that we...
Deny.
Deny the payment to...
Okay.
Gene Rhodes.
Gene Rhodes.
Does your second hold, Mike?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, now, any other discussion on it?
My understanding is that you've pretty much went through the claim and felt that it's probably legitimate, but you'll review that and make sure, and then more importantly, that we talk about future billings, in my opinion.
Yes.
That we're gonna talk about future billing, so that we can get them more timely.
In a timely manner.
Right.
Yeah, I'll talk to the judges, and we'll visit with her, and, you know, I mean, they may just have to let her know that she's gonna have to submit them in a timely manner, or we won't be able to approve them in the future.
That'd be good, thank you, appreciate that.
Diane, and make sure we double check in my office, because since I've been clerk, we have paid out some old stuff to her. Okay. So... So I'll check with you. Just to make sure, yeah, that we didn't skip a step or something. Okay, all right. I will do that.
Very good. Thank you Diane. Any other discussion? I can call the roll, Kelly.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Billing and zoning, we have a public hearing on Joshua Peterson Ag Estate Dwelling, Section 21, Township 22, Range 58 West. Billy?
So it's an active state request by Josiah Peterson. Landowner wishes to separate off 10.7 acres of marked used ground for the purpose of a future home site to the area south of the county state. It's about 145 acres that will be set aside for the reserve area on that. It's located in Section 21 Township 22, Range 58, about three and a half miles off of Lima County Road 1. The request does meet the requirements of Section 5 of the zoning regulations, and it already has access off of County Road 1 right at this moment now. The planning commission did recommend a 7-0 vote for approval.
This is a public hearing, so if anybody wishes to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak against this zoning change? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next one, then we'll vote on, on at the same time then. Next one's...
Do we need to close this public hearing separately?
We can keep them open.
We can keep them open for the, for the next one.
Thank you.
So I have two, it's actually, it's kind of two separate actions in there. It's a request for a zoning change, agricultural to residential, and a preliminary plat for the Tango Whiskey Uniform Subdivision. The request is being made by HMF Farms, wishing to separate off 9.7 acres from the adjacent farm ground for the purpose of a new home. It's located in Section 30 Township 23, Range 55, it's three quarter miles west of Sunflower Road. And the request does meet the requirements of Section 5 of the zoning regulations and Section 3 of the subdivision regulations. The planning commission did recommend approval by a 7-0 vote on that also.
Okay, thank you Bill. Again, this is a public hearing, so anybody here to speak in favor of the zoning change? Anybody here to speak in favor of the zoning change? Is there anybody to speak against the zoning change? Anybody speak against the zoning change? If not, I will close the public hearing and ask for, well, we'll do this in two separate motions. First one being the Josiah Peterson Ag Estate Dwelling.
We need action.
What's the question, Kelly?
What are you having, three separate items?
I only had it as three separate items.
He's doing that right now.
That's what he's doing, one.
He's doing the first one for that.
I'm doing the first one.
I didn't have them both on the agenda to take action.
All right, the first one, county state.
All right.
The second one.
Is the zoning change?
Yep.
And all I have is chairman's signature on the final plat of this.
That'll be the third one.
He's referring to Peterson, though I don't have this on here to take action.
She just has a public hearing and not an action.
Not, you don't have it as an action item.
I don't have an action item. Yeah.
Okay, we don't have it, we don't have it listed on here to take action on, it's just strictly a public, a public hearing.
It's supposed to be on here to do that.
It's not on there.
Could we just have to wait two weeks?
That's right.
Is that gonna be okay with the...
That's always how we list it. Ever since I've been doing this, that's how we have it listed on the agenda.
Well, we don't have it on the second, well, we do on the, we do it on the second one, because we discuss and consider the approval on the final plat for the, for the Tango Whiskey Uniform Subdivision, which refers to the one right above it. So we're taking action on that one, but not on the one ahead of it.
I didn't get that at all, do you? Isn't that what you sent that over for, to have the action?
Yeah, like I said, maybe the wording's different now, it's always what we did before.
Well, if it doesn't, I mean, we can discuss it, but if it doesn't say consider, then we can't, we really can't take any action on it, on any item.
I don't think Tanner's gonna put a subdivision there, he just wants to build his own house. But he's subdividing from the rest of the farm.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have to wait on that one, sorry. The next one, we'll move down to discuss, consider the approval.
We can't do the third one either, because we haven't approved the preliminary plat, so the chairman's signature's not gonna really matter if we have an approved plat.
That, that is...
That is on the agenda. You have to approve the preliminary plat to then approve the final plat.
That's correct.
Right.
It's two separate items.
They're in an order, right.
Two separate items.
So if you don't approve the second one, you can't approve the third one.
Okay, so we'll have to bring them back, sorry.
Table it?
We'll table it, sorry Bill.
Thanks.
We'll just have to make sure that that language is on there all the time, Kelly.
That's gotta be on.
Okay. Hmm? Next item is to a public hearing.
Are we gonna make a motion to table these?
Yes, please do.
Make a motion to table is the item 1, 2, and 3 on building zoning?
Right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I'm gonna take a voice roll call again, please.
Go ahead, call the roll.
Discussion's over?
Yeah, nobody's talking about it.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. Okay, next item, public hearing for budget hearing and summary for the relief medical fund.
Okay, this, can you hear? Is it on?
I didn't, I didn't think it was on the last time somebody was talking on it.
All right, well, give me this.
Can you, is this on?
Or this one? I think it was talking to my own desk. He's sitting up here. Are we hearing it, okay? Okay, it just didn't sound like it was that way, like over there.
I didn't think it was on, that's okay.
We have to, we have to do this separately for the special funds, and the HIDA fund and the relief fund are special funds outside of the general fund, so that's why these are under the budget hearing. The first one we're talking about is the relief medical fund. We came to you in, I think, March with, that we had already pretty much spent most of the authority, or we were coming real close, the spending authority in this account, and this account is used to pay part of the worker who works within the health department, her salary is split with this budget and with the health department budget. We also pay for county burials out of this fund, and there's a lot of relief and aid to people who don't, who maybe don't have housing, don't have, pay a lot of gas bills to get them half a tank of gas, and we were running low. So now I have to adjust the budget. We didn't do that back in March, we just asked you, do you approve us spending more? And you said, yes, that, I mean, that's kind of what the fund is there for. So, all the fund from this, all the money from this fund comes from Keno. So what this is presenting to you is to add another $10,000 from the Keno Fund to the relief medical fund, to support the spending, because we only had at the end of May, like, just under $2,000 left. And last month, they spent almost $4,000, so that's kind of a typical month, that's what I'm telling you. So we need a little more money in that fund, and it carries forward to next year, any balance.
So what you're asking is for, for us to approve the transfer of funds into that, is that correct?
Basically, just the change in the budget. I have to amend my budget, so I'm not over...
Okay, just a change in the budget.
Yes.
And we have to have a public hearing for that.
Right.
Because it's one of the special funds, and to make sure, you know, we aren't using additional property taxes for this fund, for this change, but we still have to run it through the budget hearing and budget summary process.
Okay, so this would be the public hearing for it. Is there anybody that wishes to speak as far as making that change? Again, this, just like the last one, we're not considering it, it's only a public hearing. That's not how the language is put on the agenda.
Yep, it's only a beginning of it.
Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll have to, we'll have to resubmit this at a, at a future meeting that we could discuss.
They will be in noncompliance with the auditor of public accounts.
Right, because we're at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
And that's why you're bringing them to us now, is we're at the end of the fiscal year, this is the last meeting.
Yeah, I could've brought it a month ago, but it's not been an issue.
Okay.
So we know exactly what we need. I guess you could call a special meeting.
It'd be nice if we could do it on the other three items, those people are waiting as well.
Dave?
Yes.
What's your opinion here?
Sorry, I was gonna mention something else.
Okay, it's not on the agenda as, as a discuss and consider.
Okay.
The agenda's, the agenda goes out to the public, it goes out to the media.
Yeah.
So as far as they're concerned, we're not gonna make any decision on anything.
Right.
That's not, that's not how it was printed on the agenda.
I was gonna say on the agenda.
It just says on this particular item, just public hearing, it doesn't say anything about discuss and consider the item, as it did on the, on the three ahead of it.
Yeah, then you're limited to just a public hearing.
Just a discussion only and no action?
Discussion only, no action. You can table to the next.
Okay, we'll have to have, we'll have to have a special meeting then, and what is your deadline, Lisa?
June 30th.
Okay. If we can get three of us here, we can do it, is that correct? Okay.
To my knowledge, so, okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out the logistics on it then.
Does a budget amendment call for a percent, like your big budget?
Does it call for, I'm sorry?
You have like a 70%?
Oh.
Quorum, does that apply to an amendment?
I'm not real sure, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer.
Let's find out before we, when we call the special meeting for it then, whether all of us have to be there, or just the majority.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Let's add all three of these items if we're gonna do that.
Right.
Yes.
We can add bills to this as well.
We can add bills, we can add bills to it in this one, and get them all done at once.
Good.
Good idea, thank you, Russ. Okay. Next item's road and bridge. Oh, let's, I'm sorry, I need, I need a motion to table this until we have a special meeting to handle it.
We don't act on the public hearing, or?
No, no, we're not allowed to, because it's not, it's not, that's not the way the agenda is presented.
Can I make a motion to table the hearing and summary for relief medical funding?
Is there a second?
I guess, I guess I'm seconding it, we're really not, we just had the public hearing, right?
Nothing to table.
And the public hearing is over.
Public hearing is over, but we need to take action on it.
Right, so it's the action part.
It's the action. It's the action, it's the action of the public hearing.
Did you speak to HIDA funds also already? Or just the...
No, I didn't speak to the HIDA funds, I figured it'd handle it all at once, so we're...
Well, then we're gonna have to have another public hearing.
So, if you wanna finish the public hearing portion, I guess?
Okay, and the HIDA funds, we simply, it's all grant funded, funded by the crime commission. I know, I don't think HIDA's grant, crime commission, it's state patrolled. And we've spent more this year than I put on the budget spreadsheet, and the money has come into cover everything we've spent. I just need to up my amounts to agree to what's, what's happened this year.
Okay, so, that will be included with that, that other public hearing that we're gonna have then, or the other consideration that we're going to do. Okay? Is there any other discussion? Do you wanna call the roll on this, 'cause you don't have it listed, Kelly?
I had them as one item, the way it was presented to me, so...
We just need to close the public hearing and go on to the next item on the agenda.
Right.
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and move on.
One question for Lisa, so, how much was that on the HIDA, did you say?
I had budgeted that we were going to spend around ninety-seven thousand dollars, and to date, we've spent a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So, I'm gonna have to increase both the expenses and the revenue.
So, it's about twenty-nine thousand difference?
Yes.
But no tax?
What?
No tax liability or concern?
No tax liability, it's all, it's all grant funded.
It's already been paid for.
Okay. We'll move on. Moving on to road and bridge, Steve?
For real?
And his does say discuss and consider.
Sounds good. So...
Okay, it was gravel bid time again for the year, uh, we received two gravel bids. We should have, I believe, one from Simon's, for the class two A state spec road gravel at thirteen twenty-five a ton. And they also gave us an alternate of a three-quarter road base at the same price of thirteen twenty-five a ton. The other one was from Rem screening, and it was an inch and a half minus at six fifty a ton. And they have two different pits listed there, one north of Scotts Bluff and one of Mitchell. The difference, such a difference between the price, one is pump gravel, one is just screen gravel. That's why the big difference in price.
And which one do you prefer, Steve?
Overall, the pumped. Simon's can only pump so much for us, and our other company that used to bid gravel for us is retiring, so, yeah, we're stuck with one. So, I, Chrome, reached out to them, they tried to make the spec and just couldn't quite get it done before bid time, so, I hope that next year they can maybe get into that, so... So, once again, in the past, we've always, uh, accepted all bids when they come in. As in all times, when Simon's only pumps for so long, and they're doing asphalt, they run out, we need gravel from somewhere else. So, I guess I would recommend approving all bids again.
Both, both bids are submitted, okay? Got your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
I would move to accept both bids for the gravel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you.
You wanna tell us where you're at on your roads, or you got a minute?
I can't, I have to replug, yeah. Um, we just finished chip sealing hallway between Lyman and Henry. Uh, we moved to Wright's Gap this afternoon, and we'll start that tomorrow.
Where we at on the completion of Stegle?
Uh, that'll be in August.
Okay.
Seventh day, ninth, week and seventh is when it'll, two miles be nailed.
I've had numerous people asking me about that.
And then we'll double chip seal that.
Okay.
So, we probably won't get, we were gonna have Wright's Gap done this week, but it looks like the weather's probably gonna throw a kink in that. So, uh, we were hoping to be done Thursday night, but it's supposed to rain, it sounds like Wednesday night, Thursday. So, I canceled Thursday because if I have tanker show up, I gotta pay for them. If we can't run, that's...
Numerous compliments on, numerous, numerous compliments on Stegle Road. Yes. Everybody's pleased, they're just wondering when the rest of it's gonna get done.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty miles to go.
Yeah.
So, that's where we're pretty much at there, so...
Thank you, Steve. Uh, you're still up, buddy?
What's that?
What it looks like?
On the flood control is, for the Scotts Bluff Drain Committee, we met, oh, a few weeks ago, and there was a property on thirteen oh one East Tenth Street in Scotts Bluff. Um, a Mr. Barron had purchased this property, and apparently was not disclosed that he could not develop on this property. This property is an open lot, there's no buildings on it. For that purpose, he would like to be reimbursed what he paid for the property. He paid a total of eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents for the property. Uh, we split that cost, the Scotts Bluff, with the city of Scotts Bluff, so, the county's share would be nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. That comes out of our Scotts Bluff Drain Sinking Fund, which we have around four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in.
Who else participates in that besides the county and Scotts Bluff?
Just the county, county and the Scotts Bluff.
Just the two entities, huh?
And that is kind of the goal of the Drain Committee, is these properties that lie over the Scotts Bluff drain there, as they become available, is to slowly purchase them, so we don't have any other liabilities. I believe in two thousand eighteen, the house was purchased on East Overland for like ninety thousand, because the drain, if when it filled up, seeped into the basement at that time.
And his purchase was eighteen thousand?
Yes. Eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen. It was a, his is an open lot, the other one was an actual house on there, so, that's why the purchase happens.
Who did he buy that lot from?
I cannot tell you who he bought it from.
I just looked it up, uh, and I, I would only say this, and that's that, just because he bought that lot and basically, it, it appears made a mistake in not doing the due diligence, it looks like it had title insurance based upon what I was seeing. And they should've told him.
Absolutely.
But, um, even at that, I, what I am finally understanding actually is that, um, the Scotts Bluff Drain Committee, which I'm on, but have never attended that meeting because I haven't got the notice about it. But in any event, uh, I think we got that corrected. There, the committee is considering it kind of a blessing, because they actually are pleased to purchase those properties where the drain is at. And they're, they have paid more than that for other properties, um, along the way. But they're, they're trying to buy them up so that they control the access on both sides, and that, um, uh, they can... The, the city of Scotts Bluff, um, mows those lots in the, those that are in the city. And so, uh, my first initial feeling was it wasn't our responsibility to reimburse someone because they had made a mistake in a purchase. But then, I, I'm realizing now that, um, the committee feels there's advantage that we're getting to purchase this property, and it's at a reasonable rate. It's a fairly big lot, it's, um, the eighteen thousand dollars, um, I don't remember how many square feet, but it's a bunch. It's a big lot.
The county would have no maintenance issues on that lot, the city. We simply just have an open meeting, you guys, okay? The city actually takes ownership of it, and it's up to theirs, them to take care of, because it lies in city lines. If it was out in the county, that'd be flip-flopped, then the county would have actually have ownership.
It goes into their insurance and their, their maintenance.
Yep, yep. It's just part of the agreement or bylaws that the county and the city split the purchases.
And that money comes out of that, that fund?
The sinking fund, yes.
Sinking fund. I hate to ask this, what, what's, what's it assessed at?
I couldn't tell you that, I didn't look, I did not look that up, so...
Okay.
Could I have the amount again?
Eight, uh, the county's share would be nine thousand, one fifty-six, ninety-nine.
Okay, what's Ward's pleasure?
I would move in to approve the purchase of the property at thirteen oh one East Tenth Street, Scotts Bluff.
Is there a second?
No, second, right.
Is there any other further discussion?
Well, it's like Mark, and when I first saw that, I thought, why are we, my loss, that we need to mow and do all this? But after you go through it a little bit, it's the right thing to do, the city's gonna take it over, and it's, it's the right thing.
Okay? Any other discussion?
I agree with Russ.
Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close, please.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Need a motion to move into Board of Equalization?
I'll move and go into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll see.
Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close. First item?
And you have five yeses?
Thank you, first item, discuss and consider approval of one motor vehicle exemption for capstone. Heather?
All right, so, this vehicle is a renewal. It's a twenty-twenty Chevrolet Trax. The total tax locks, tax loss is two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Capstone provides forensic interviews and advocacy services to child abuse victims and their non-affinating caregivers. They facilitate MDT meetings in the Panhandle as directed by state statute. This vehicle is used to provide travel to forensic interviews, um, in Shadrin, Alliance, and Sydney. It will also be used to travel to MDT meetings, staff training, state chapter meetings, community presentations, court hearings, and appointments with victims and their families. And I would recommend approval.
Okay.
I would move to approve the motor vehicle exemption for capstone.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item is to receive the taxless corrections. We've all looked at those. Entertain a motion for approval?
I made a motion to approve the, uh, taxless corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your vote, please.
Okay, to close?
Close.
Five yeses?
Next item, discuss and consider the over and under evaluation report.
Hello, gentlemen, how are you? I'm here for Angie, gentlemen?
Thank you. Do, go, thank you.
So, I guess we're here to review the over and under value report for the feedlots. I think the last meeting Angie talked to you about, um, we'd like to consider, um, taking off the thirty-five percent. Remind you that it will stick in the system as well, it's not just a, a Band-Aid or whatever you wanna use, but it will stick. This way, it, it kinda gives a, because we can do an intensive use, we're able to do this because of the type of use, and, um, they can, the protesters can still protest on them as well, you know, but we're just giving the offer to go ahead and take the thirty-five percent off and go from there. So, that's what I'm here to do, to, to ask you to consider this.
Two questions.
Yeah.
Why wasn't this done prior to sending out the cards?
Um, well, when she rolled everything, I don't think she realized that the feedlots were rolled with like they were, and when she looked at them, she realized that we should, we should do something.
Are we that incompetent that we don't know?
No, sir, that is not incompetent, no, sir.
That is very incompetent.
No. Well, if, if you say so.
Second, second question is how are the feedlots going to be notified of this over and under report?
We will send them, we will send them notification.
A second card?
Yes, sir. Second notification.
Okay. Now, the, the, I, I did get, I did receive this, and, uh, looking at, looking at some of the, some of the increases were totally out of line, I, as far as I'm concerned. When I asked the question as to what was the basis, it, it was on sales. Is that, would that be a correct statement?
Yeah, that'd be a correct statement, for the last two years of sales, you know where, how they were.
No, 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 I, excuse, I, I don't know how they were, 'cause I don't believe there were any feedlots sales.
I just said I don't know about feedlot sales myself, I'm just up here to do this, this part of this.
Right, I understand, I, I understand.
Okay.
Uh, so, and, and I know that most of the stuff, whether we're doing residential, whatever's based on sales, market areas or whatever.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we've had any feedlot sales that, that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of it myself, sir.
And I...
I have not looked into that part.
I, I, I don't follow all of them, but I'm...
Neither do I.
The research that I've done, I don't think we've had.
I don't think so either, but I'm not sure.
I don't think so either, but we've had, we've had some feedlots that have almost doubled in, in value.
Yes.
Okay.
You have the prior values, you have twenty-twenty-three values here, but have you rolled these back actually to the twenty-twenty-two values, or where are we standing?
No, we're taking the thirty-five percent.
So, what was the increase then?
Uh, thirty-five percent, unless there was any kind of building permits or anything done.
You, you, you put thirty-five percent on, you took thirty-five off, is this what you're saying?
Yes.
So, you're back to the twenty-twenty, you're back to twenty-twenty-two?
No.
No, no.
No.
No. No.
No, I can, I can, I can verify on, on, on one of them that I figured there was still over a hundred thousand dollar increase, over, over the twenty-twenty-two.
That's where we need to be.
So, when I...
You can, like we said, we just need to consider, if you don't consider, we understand that.
Okay.
If you do consider, then we, they can still protest, we'll at least get them back to the thirty-five, it's your guys' decision.
The answer that I got when I asked for last year, last year's, a list of last year's, the answer that I received was it would be too confusing.
Well...
What would, what would be confusing about that, in your, in your opinion?
In my opinion, on the confusing part, is where you just roll a little bit here, a little bit there, and then when we do the correct thing, you know, where it's supposed to go. I don't know where exactly the confusion is, 'cause I'm not working the backside, sir. I, I'm just here to, to help Angie with this notification, 'cause she's not here.
Okay.
Where is the assessor tonight?
She's in a meeting, she's in an, uh, an assessor, um, it's in Iowa, she went to Iowa for the, an assessor deal, I don't remember what it... I don't remember what it's called, but she's gone to do that. She just wasn't gonna be here, she noted that too as well.
What?
I, you know, I, I can't answer it all.
Um, is this, is this public information?
Absolutely.
Is it, would anyone like to?
Well, it, it would be if we approve it.
Well, it's before you as a board, it's available at me.
Yeah, it's, it's available now, it's on the agenda.
Does anybody in the gallery wanna check this out?
Well, I think the, I think the, the feedlot operators, have you seen it, Brian? No? Okay.
No, I didn't, I talked to Brian a little bit today, and when I give you this, then you can decide what you're gonna do with...
Sure. I understand. But even, as I say, and I didn't have all of the, which is why I requested last year's, 'cause I, I don't have them, I don't know what, what they are, uh, to see what the...
Did you request that on the last meeting with her, is that what you did?
Uh, when I got, when I got this, the original, the original one, I just wasn't able to print it, I don't know why. I, I know why, it's operator error.
Well, it couldn't be you, maybe it wasn't sent as a PDF, maybe an Excel.
I'm not sure, but what I wanted to do was look at what last year's was, what the increase was, and then where we were on this one.
So, uh, let me tell you what I just looked up on that. So, I just happened to pick one out, this, it's about the fifth one down, it says Wine Rice Brothers, and, um, that value, the new, um, current value is two million, one thirty-seven. See that?
Yes.
And then, the previous value prior to that was one point seven seven eight. And this is saying that it's gonna go down to one point six oh nine, three fifty-five.
It's gonna be lower.
It's actually gonna be lower than what it was.
Okay.
So, I think that answers part of the question.
If I could've gotten those.
And I, I, just assuming, if it's a thirty-five percent deal across the board, that all of these would be in a similar situation.
I would say, I cannot guarantee it, but I can, I can say that when they get their second card, then they can, like you said, they, they're still gonna be able to protest further, and she's willing to do this, this part here.
Yeah, the one, the one that I was aware of, uh, the value was nine forty-six, and recommend, recommendation was go down to five seventy-three, last year's was four something. Would that be correct, Brian? Four forty-nine? 449, so we still have over $100,000 increase. So if that's, if that's the case, and if that was going all the way down, I don't know that we've done that much. We've done some.
What are you listing over here? What's your fall run?
Fall run feeders. He, he had sent me a copy of his card. That's the only reason I knew what it was. But, you know, and we, the, the, the thing that, that we've discussed, and I really, really wish Angie was here, that we could ask the questions. Yeah, and, and we don't mean to pick on you here.
It's okay.
But, uh.
It's alright, I can take it.
You got, you got thrown in the barrel here, so I'm sorry.
I'm alright.
But the, we had a formula. We had what I thought was a good formula, and I, I thought, yeah, there he is. I thought I saw Mr. Riker come in. We, we, we had a, we had a formula in place that was working. It was agreeable, that we felt it was good for everybody. A hundred bucks a head, dollar foot on the, on the, on the bunks. And it was, it was reasonable, and I think everybody agreed with that, and that just evidently went away. I have no idea where it went or why we're, why we're back. And, and again, I go back to the question as to what we used for the increase. And I can understand it if, if we have a market area and a residential area that is below that 94% and we need to get it to where it needs to be, that I, I'm okay with that. But I'm not aware, and we have a few cattle, feedlot owners here, uh, on sales. I, I don't know if anybody's selling their feedlots right now, so I don't know where the sales are coming from. And in, in today's economy.
Today's?
In today's economy.
Today's.
This is a, this is a tough, this is a tough pill to swallow.
Yes.
Uh, for, for our ag producers.
For all of us.
For, for our ag producers and everybody else. It really is. And we'll discuss that more when we get, when we get down the line here. But we've got, we have some of the folks that have taken time out of their day to come here and, and to ask the questions, and I don't think that we're going to get them all answered, unfortunately. But this was their, this is the, they call the over, under value report. This came out after the cards went out, which I, again, I'm concerned about why this wasn't done prior to the cards going out. If we, if we notice that we have such a tremendous increase, where the increase came from, why it wasn't handled prior to, prior to getting, to you getting your increase. It, I might have to have you come up to the, yeah, I have to come from the podium, Brian, if you would, please. Come on up, Brian.
I've not seen this report you're looking at, but if I'm understanding this, if your valuation went up less than 35%, you're going to come in lower than 22. If you were higher.
According to the one that marked.
35%, you're still going to be higher than 22.
Uh, did you do any repair or do anything, any building or expansion or anything?
This will be the third time I've been here. Every two years, we go, we go through this. And I mean, the, kind of the formula we had going into this was $100 per head on permitted capacity or linear feed bunk, whichever is less. So if you're permitted for 5,000 head, you're at 500,000. If you're 10,000 head permit, but only have 5,000 head of bunk, you're at 500,000 on valuation. Everybody was happy with that. But it's been reoccurring every two years. This is the third time.
Why is it totally, why is it changing? What's causing it?
I have no idea. I mean, I do not know of any feed yards that have traded in the county. Uh, not that there might not have been, you know, 500 foot of bunk with a farm or something, but I, I know of any, don't know of anything that would justify this kind of increase.
Do, do you have, do you have an answer, Carrie?
I don't, and I, and I wish I did. I wish I'd known a little deeper. I would have done, done some work on it today on sales or anything so I could pull up, so.
I asked the questions. I, I did. I, I mean, I've been, I've been making calls and, but, but.
I'm just saying, not on my part.
Sure, I understand.
And Brian was here today, so, and I was telling him that we're, we're at least considering this, you know, we're, you know, we understand that. If there was some kind of con, deal that you guys had, I mean, I'll bring that up to Angie. I mean, whatever you guys decide, because I don't, I don't know.
Well, and I didn't, I didn't have the opportunity to go through other ones because the only one I had was yours, but it still looked like you had over $100,000 increase.
I know. One other one, my neighbor was a 65% increase. His was $750. I was right at 50.
Okay. Again, not, not knowing what those, that 22 number was.
Right.
I don't know whether that, whether this is going to help or whether it's not. So I'm, I'm, I'm reluctant, I'm reluctant to devote in, in favor of this, to be honest with you, at this point, and then. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So one of the things I'm looking at on yours, Brian, is that your previous value was 449, 449,000. And 35% additional, Carrie, would be 606, 606,000. But it actually went to 946,000. And that's the substantial difference that's more than just 35% that I'm seeing.
I think they need to be taken back and retabulated and gone through.
I, I just have a question.
Yeah, it just, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm more than confused. I'm more than confused. I'm not getting the answers, and either you, and it's.
So it, it says on the top of this sheet, feedlots had a 35% increase applied in error. But we're, we've already pulled out two that received a greater than 35% increase. So I guess where did we, where's this line come from? Where does this verbiage come from? Was that, was that just pulled out of thin air also?
No.
I mean, I just.
No, no. We, it was a 35% increase. Now, on the other value part of it, Angie should be here, but she's not, and I'm sorry. She didn't fill me in 100%, so I'm just here to do the report. You guys decide what you want to do. We'll go ahead and do, well, I think really what, honestly, I kind of like what he is saying. They should go back to the contract a little 100 head, know how he has it, like that.
How did it change from that?
I don't know, Russ. If I known, I'd be right here to tell you.
It was, it was there and everybody seemed to be happy with it.
And I'm sure everybody will continue to be happy with it, but I wasn't there. I don't know.
Are we going to be able to roll it back to that?
Okay, well, then that's what you guys need to agree on.
How do you feel about it?
I think everybody, everybody that was involved the first time was happy with that, felt that was fair.
And I think it's fair.
And realistic with, with how they can trade. There's really been none of these feeders changed hands to substantiate their bids.
The only thing, there may be some rail, if you have some farm ground attached to that, and if the grass or something went up on that, that may have changed that a little bit. I don't know, I don't know your situation, but it's just a quickly.
But, but there again, that shouldn't be changed unless you've got some sales to prove it.
Well, we do. On grass, we do. Grass did go up on everybody, 450.
They raised my grass.
Yes, we do have that, so.
And that's off of sales?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is.
That is probably off, off sales on grass.
Yes, it is.
I don't know if your feedlot's totally separated from the farm.
No, it, it's just feed dirt.
So it's totally separate, so it shouldn't have gone up.
And somehow farm ground, but yours don't, I guess.
It, it should have went up 35, back down 35, and washed. And if you have no grass attached to it.
And mine actually took out a 10% increase.
Yeah, if it was 35, it'd be fine, but this wasn't.
I was going to say, it needed to be 35 up, 35 down, but whatever they've gone up, they're going to have to back it back down to 22, 2022 tax evaluation.
Depending on, depending on two, I mean, I can see your point there, but I do have to agree on the grass part if they are, but he doesn't. I'm just saying, there may be others here that might be considered.
Yes, there could be some other options.
Because that's an absolute.
But his is way too lopsided at over 100%.
That I get, but I don't know why, so I can't explain that. I'm sorry, I can't. I don't know.
As a point of procedure, so I'm taking, if Brian got 100% increase, is that right? 100. Uh, so obviously, he's filed a protest.
Sure.
It'd already been done. But, but we're saying that you're going to send out cards then to, again to everyone. But the cutoff date is, they've got until June 30th to file protests. So when are these cards going to go out? When are they going to get them?
Okay.
I'm assuming everybody like Brian got.
She told me that.
Filed the protest, I mean.
And I'm sure they all got a shock. I mean, I, I, I get this, I do. Um, she told me that we would work on it first thing tomorrow, whatever has been chosen to do, that, she told me I would work on these first thing tomorrow.
When is she going to be back in town?
Uh, Monday, I think.
A week.
It's all over the phone.
A week from yesterday.
Supposedly, this conference ends on the 22nd.
I don't think I'm getting in the situation though, where you're sending these out and people are getting them, getting them in late because they got them late. I mean, are they going to extend the, the date to file past July?
I don't know if statutorily we can, can we?
I don't think you can.
I don't think we can.
Well, let me ask this question. Are, you said something about Carrie that we would need to approve this. Well, we don't, I guess the way I'm thinking is we don't need to approve this.
You can fix.
They have the authority to correct an error. And I think they can do it anyway. Now, I'm happy to vote that way, but I think, to me, the furthest we can do tonight is what's on this sheet. And then what Carrie is saying is that if then they still don't agree, they need to file a protest. And many of them may have already done so. And so the, i- if they're going down, then I don't see the point in an extension. But if they were going up, I would see where that extension would be important, and I think that's a problem statutorily. But they're going down, so they may have already filed, and, and many should have probably.
I, I, I see this a lot with, on, on the residential's, and we'll see it on our protests. But we'll get a protest, and there'll be an assessor's recommendation on that protest. That, you know, they, they looked at it prior to, prior to us getting it, and we either accept their recommendation or we listen to the protester and, and make some other recommendation. And I see that, that happening with this.
Basically, she said she's increased them 35%. She's going to back them down 35%.
Well, and, and that's what will be on the protest sheet as they, when they, when they're submitted to us.
But, but basically, so.
We'll have the lower value on there.
You're going back to 2022 values. You're not changing on 2020. You went up, you came back down, you're at the same, you're supposed to be at the same place. But the math won't work out then. You'll take off more than you put in.
Yeah, if you're 35% of the low number versus 35% of the high number, then it's going to be different.
You're going to actually go backwards from where you started, actually.
Well, then we all, we, but we also have properties that went up more than 35%.
I realize, but I think with these feedlots, that's what we're dealing with right now. I think what we should do is, rather than using the 35 up and the 35 down, because we're going to lose ground on that, is just revert those back to 2022 prices and then adjust the grass, and she can adjust the grass or whatever farm land's attached with that. But these feedlots should go back to 2020, 20, 2022 values.
I don't know that we can.
Not go math up math.
I don't know that we can do that en masse. I don't think statutorily we can do that en masse.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe so.
I was just going to ask, Dave. I don't know if they have to file a.
I think we can do it individually, but I don't think we can just blanket.
You have a question?
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, sit, go ahead and sit down.
And I think we better get started.
Again, and I, I don't mean to sound repetitive, but I think, I think what you're going to see on, on Brian's or anybody else's protest is, is an assessor's recommendation, which is going to be probably this. And, and, and I agree with you, Dave, that the, you sent the cards out, then they got to get back in here and, and file it by the 30th, a second protest. Because I'm sure a lot of these folks have already filed one protest. What, yeah, what, what happened with that? They've already filed one protest, we file a second one?
I think we can correct, you know, if we do this correction, like, like she quotes here, I think we can just correct it and initial it, what we chose there. But we can fix this with sending out the information.
And if they still want to protest, then that, then the protest is still valid, correct? Off of, off of the, off of the first card and the first date?
Yes.
So that we don't, we, while we, I don't think statutorily we can extend the 30th.
I don't think so.
So everybody's going to have to come in and, and still continue to protest, off of their original protest.
I mean, you can always, that recommendation, like how you guys were doing it before, I, we'll see why we can't continue. That's my opinion, but.
That's, I agree with you. I think that's exactly what you ought to do, and, and it would be fair.
Yeah.
And it would get you accountable, if they've added more head or if they've taken away, you're going to know where.
And that, and that's your option. That's your op, that's your office's option to do that.
Yes, sir.
Not so much ours, but yours.
Yeah, I can offer that to Angie, and I, I don't see why not, because it's always worked before.
I think we ought to stay with that.
So whether we approve this tonight or not, it's really not going to make a difference.
So what we decide to do to do the change.
Yeah.
Get back a card back out.
I think we ought to allow you to make the changes and not be bound to this, because I don't think this is correct.
Okay, I'll talk to her about the contract you guys had before with feedlots.
Yeah, and, and then, and then all those that file protests are still going to come in to protest. And the, and the assessor's recommendation is going to be on that protest.
Sure, on that, on that per head and everything.
We can either accept or reject the assessor's, the assessor's recommendation.
Okay.
Just like we do on a residential.
Sounds good to me. And then, like I said.
Sometimes they lower it, sometimes they don't.
The grass might change, you know, with that perspective, but you have to understand.
As long, as long, as long as there's documentation to, to, to go with that. I don't have a problem with that.
Yep, and I, and I'll ask, you know, I have, I don't know about feedlots for sale, but I do know of the grass, for sure.
There's been enough sales.
I'm part of the grass.
There, there's been enough sales to, to document that, but I don't think there has been on the, on the feedlots.
Okay, so I'll, I'll leave it to her, and we'll work on it tomorrow.
Can you follow up with that, Brian, and see how that goes and get back to Ken? I mean, when she gets back in the office Monday, to follow up to see that that's the direction she is going to go.
Or have, or have Angie get ahold of me or one of the other.
I'd like to know that you know that you're, you're comfortable with what's going on.
Sure.
Just so, you know, I want, I'd like to report back from someone other than in this building.
I guess I'm trying to think this through and that. I'd sure hate to think that Angie gets back and says, well, they needed to approve that.
No, I'm going to talk to her before she gets back, so we're going to work on this tomorrow.
I know, but we don't have another meeting for two weeks.
Well, we're going to have a, we're going to have a special.
We're going to have a special.
We could put this on the agenda if necessary.
Yeah, and it's on the agenda now to discuss and consider. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a motion to approve what they've given us and to continue working on making sure the information is correct for any other reductions that are available or something like that.
Add that, add that to your motion.
I think we should disapprove this, because if we, if it, if we approve that, aren't we kind of bound, are this, these numbers, the 35 up to 35 down, we're going to lose ground doing that, that ain't going to work.
Well, the way I, I would want to word it is that if that doesn't lock it into these numbers, it just simply says, let's go off at least this amount and then review for any further reduction.
I'm not sure that that's going to happen, Mark. I think, I think, I think I have a tendency to, to agree with, with Russ in the fact that if we approve this over and under value, just like we did the, the, we're, just like we did the $2 million one a couple of meetings ago. That, that, or 200 million, that that's what we have approved, and that's where it stops, and I don't want that to happen. I, I, I don't want, I don't want to take the chance of that happening. I want these folks to be able to continue their protest with the assessor's office, looking at it again, and possibly using the formula that we came up with on the 100, the $100 per head, a buck a foot on the, on the, the bunks, and see if we can come to some type of solution. I don't know that this one is the answer.
Okay.
That's my, that's my opinion.
I agree with that.
That's my opinion. And if we, if we vote to approve this.
Yeah, you don't want to.
I don't know that.
We can't get out of it.
I'm, I'm, whether we can or can't, I don't want to take the chance.
Take the chance.
I really don't. But that's my, that's my own.
Well, and I would only say, I agree with what you're saying. I agree with giving these folks the best opportunity that they can have to get something corrected.
Correct, yeah.
I, I agree with that.
That's all I'm, I'm trying to suggest, but if you guys think that it's better not to approve this, then.
I disapprove.
Because I do believe that the county assessor has the authority to correct things when they're wrong, when they've made an error.
Absolutely, you see that here. You see that here. They're willing to practice.
Angie fixed a whole bunch of issues last year, prior to, you know, I'd rather see you guys take care of this than your.
Okay, and, and like I said, don't forget the, you know, if they have other land with grass, that's going to change too a little bit, so add it to your.
But you have justification for that.
I want you to know.
With sales, and I don't have a problem with that.
I'll go ahead and, I'll talk to Angie.
I don't have a problem with that, but I'm, I'm, anyway, I, I think I've said what needs to be said. Okay, with that, what's the board's, what's the board's pleasure on this item only, at, at this point?
Make a motion to disapprove this and go back to the $100 a head or.
Well, I, let, let, let's not.
Or no, how we want to word it.
We're just, we're, we're just doing this.
Disapprove.
Just disapprove.
I'm just gonna make a motion to disapprove under and over value report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion?
I mean, I, I would just go as far as to say that the, the second line on this piece of paper says, feedlots had a thirty-five percent increase applied in error. And, and from that moment, that line right there is a false statement and we cannot approve this based on that.
Some of them are a lot more than.
It's just, it's that simple.
Yeah.
Some are a lot more than thirty-five.
Well, we have, we have, we have an example sitting right here. And how many more of these are the same way that I don't know about? I, I think we need to deal with them case by case.
And make sure they get back where they need to be.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Record your votes, please. So the motion is to dis, a, a yes vote would be to disapprove, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we disapprove.
Is that right? We doing that correctly?
Ain't right. That's the way it is.
Okay, the motion, the motion.
The motion was to disapprove and yes agrees with Russell's motion. Yes.
Right. Right, okay.
Did we get a second one then?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
And we had the discussion.
Oh, Charlie's second. Okay, got it, thank you. I'm all wound up.
Okay, to close?
Close it, please.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, are you gonna be here, are you gonna be here for, you're gonna be here for the discussion at the end too? Thank you. Well, we'll try to be a little easier. Can't promise it, but we'll try. Thank you for your, thank you for what, what you did. Appreciate that. Uh, as far as feedlots are concerned, I don't know that we're gonna be discussing much more on the feedlots at the end. It's probably more on residential and procedures and those kind of things. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay. Don't, don't get me wrong. Okay? Uh, where are we at? Oh, yes, I need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization.
I'll move we come out of the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to close?
Close.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item out of general agenda is receive the RCI presentation.
Just a second. Um, can I talk about the insurance committee recommendations before Joe gets up?
Absolutely.
Okay. Insurance Committee review. This year we evaluated RCI and we also called in NACO to, um, to see what their offerings were like this year. And anyway, I was gonna tell you a little bit of a synopsis of what we found when we met with both groups. May fifth, we met with RCI and discussed our plan status along with questions and concerns that we have and that we've heard from our employees. Specifically, specific topics would be the pharmacy plan, customer service, physician network credentialing issues, correspondence from RCI and those kind of topics. We also discussed our laser situation and updates that needed to be made based on enrollment changes. Recommend, recommendations were to stay with the same stop loss carrier we've been with for the same, for these last three years. Then we met with NACO. They came in on May eleventh. The representatives came on site and discovered different options for health insurance, including, including a full covered insurance plan and self-funding plan options. Full covered options included Aetna and Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And self-administer plan was through HM Life, which is fully owned by Blue Cross Blue Shield. They were given the RCI rates that we were given and RCI was also afterwards given the NACO rates. So it was full disclosure, we had to provide NACO with a whole lot of data from our current plan. NACO representatives work alongside counties to help them make the most advantageous decision. Their were, their rates really were not better than RCI and there were concerns if we would switch and have, would we have our rates increased in the following years. Representatives provided guidance and questions to take back to RCI as well. And for one was to watch for frequent stop carrier loss changes. Um, telling us that TPAs will shop around it for different carriers just based on better rates and how that could be a problem for a plan. Um, second was how are our pharmacy rebates managed? And we have an organ transplant policy with RCI and to verify that this wasn't duplicate coverage with our stop loss cover, carrier. So we met back with RCI, who came back to us with even better rates. And we had an opportunity to discuss these questions with them. And as a result, we will be cer- well, we are going to stay with RCI with decision made. This year during open enrollment, RCI is going to help us provide better educational opportunities for our employees. And we do intend to provide a section, second option to our, to our employees, not just the high deductible, but maybe one that has higher rates per month, but instead of having to meet the three thousand dollar deductible, a person can go to the ER and pay five hundred dollars or maybe go to a doctor and pay a hundred dollars upfront rather than waiting for the two hundred dollar office visit to come through. So, anyway, that's what I wanted to share with that with you. That was our insurance committee decision to you to remain with RCI. The rates are, I think Joe will tell you, flat, stay at flat if not better, and I'll let him take it from here.
Thank you. Here's the synopsis. The rates this year. As Lisa mentioned, we were able to go back to the incumbent carrier and, um, the rates are actually going down two percent, uh, pretty much across the board. So, uh, we are honored to work with Scottsbluff County and have been for several years. As you know, um, there's fifty plus households, uh, in the county that, um, are employees of, uh, RCI. So, um, with that, I ask for your approval to continue working for the county.
Well, Lisa, thanks for, uh, shopping around. I think it was, um, it turned out to be advantageous for us and, um, you know what? I'm sure NACO agrees with your decision and the insurance group's decision, so, um, you know, not only do they offer these, um, products for sale, but they also tell us, you know, what, what our best decision is gonna be. And so, you know, it's, it's really a, a benefit that we, that we brought them in and had them bid and then, um, sounds like, um, that, that little bit of competition saved us about two percent.
Correct.
And thanks to RCI, I think that's, um, you know, your willingness to, to work with us and NACO and, um, I think that shows a lot of, uh, trust and transparency there, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank Lisa for her hours and hours and, and going through this stuff. We get a little short report on it and she spends days, literally days, uh, going through numbers and comparisons and everything else on it, to bring us the best product, working with these companies. She's becoming quite, quite proficient when it comes to insurance.
We're learning the language, aren't we?
It won't be long, we'll get you a briefcase.
And one of the commissioners is on that.
Oh, yes, I didn't mention. My, the committee consists of, um, myself, Ken Meyer, Mark Overman, um, Steve Baird and Nancy Leach. So we have a, we have an official, we have an employee, we have a commissioner and we have an elected official. So an elected and unemployed official.
Who's the elected official?
Mark Overman.
Oh.
Perhaps I said that, maybe I didn't.
No, you did.
Okay.
I just.
Well, I'm okay with.
Okay. Uh, what's the board's pleasure?
This is, um, are we taking action then on this tonight?
Yes.
So I would move approval of, um, the renewal with RCI.
I will second that. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close.
Five yeses?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Did you learn everything you need to know about buying a feedlot? Okay, just, thank you, Joe. Uh, next item is to discuss a consider resolution for budget enhancement for county court and county attorney.
Okay, I believe you've been provided with a copy of the resolution that I gave and shoot, I'm not finding it up here, so I guess I just read what's in front of me.
I need a copy of the RCI stuff.
I have two or three over here, Kelly, too.
I have more.
Do you need it?
Maybe it's in here. Okay, and I believe with the saying discuss and consider, you can approve this, right?
Yes.
That's what you were saying. Okay. Whereas the budgets for Scottsbluff County Court and Scottsbluff County Treasurer, it should say county attorney, sorry guys, I think we'll have to get another one printed for you to sign, were approved and adopted for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Whereas the attorney fee costs were not budgeted high enough in the county court budget and the salary expenses were under budgeted in the county attorney's budget. Now therefore be it resolved, the county court budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three be increased in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand dollars and the county attorney's budget increased in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Both amounts are to be reduced from the administration and general budget under, um, nine seven one two dash seventy-four hundred line item known as budget assistant for the same budget year. Dated this twentieth day of June twenty twenty-three at Garry, Nebraska in a regular meeting of the Scottsbluff County Commissioners. It has all your names.
I don't have these.
Don't you?
No.
I thought I sent them to you some time ago. Okay. I'll go get them printed.
And so the way this is written, it doesn't change the bottom line budget, it just transfers it from two funds to, from one fund to two funds.
Correct, oh, that's why. Yes.
But it doesn't change the bottom line because they have it in the miscellaneous or?
It's under, yeah, and we had budgeted extra in this line item last year with the wage study that happened, that we were just prepared to help budgets that weren't going to be able to handle the difference in the wages that the wage study brought about, and that's what Dave's budget is about. That's the concern there.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
I would move approval of this resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay, to close?
Close.
You have five yeses?
Thank you.
Kelly, I believe I just signed. I'll grab it before the end of the meeting.
Okay, next I have discuss, consider the NERMA invoice for July third payment.
Did you have questions? I guess I, I wanted to make sure and present that in front of you. It increased by a significant amount and if you've got ahold of the letter that accompanied our insurance bill, I do believe that they addressed the fact that property insurance build, like the building piece went up everywhere. Oh, here it is in front of me, duh. And I would, I don't know the update for the airport. I thought they might be looking to reimburse us. Did they mention it at their last meeting?
We have a meeting there tomorrow.
You have a meeting?
I can call you after the meeting.
Can I come to the meeting? What time is the meeting out?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty? Okay. Cause yeah, Rawls been asking me some questions about things. And I don't think they disagree and it's different, it's less than what they were quoted.
So it's better, we're better on that.
We are better. Well, we have a five hundred dollar deductible for damage and they have a fifty thousand dollar wind and hail deductible.
Did they get a different quote for the one that we talked about earlier?
No, that's the one I know of.
That's the one that, okay.
Yeah, that it was well over ninety thousand and we're, we're looking at eighty something thousand.
They basically have no insurance anyway, that, right?
Yeah.
Just you could say. But yeah, that's where the lion's share of our change all came from, built the property coverage.
Have you given that?
Yes, I sent it to him and he felt we had plenty of budget authority to take care of them. The airport. You know, we have fourteen million to theirs. I'm saying that.
We can do that if we wanna take back all the property and start collecting some revenue, but I don't think we want to do that.
Good luck.
So this was a nineteen percent increase is what this is saying. Um, but are we?
I didn't, I didn't calculate the percentage, but I'll take your word for it, yes.
Uh, and that's what they're saying here and it looks like about nineteen percent is what it says in their letter, but, so then let me be sure I understand, so these numbers do or do not include the airport?
It do, they do.
They do. And so there may be a reduction because of that.
So the nineteen percent wouldn't be accurate on the total picture.
There's gonna be no deduction right now. We're covering them this year. We're just a matter of whether they, we asked them to reimburse us.
That's what I'm talking.
What else to reimburse them?
Or how they feel about that. Their portion went up from fifty thousand last year to eighty-five thousand this year.
But we've been paying that. So the only question is whether or not we're gonna get anywhere with that negotiation, right? As far as whether or not they participate in, in, um, whether it be, we'll call it eighty-five thousand and our increase was a hundred and sixteen thousand. So.
We didn't need to make a resolution to remove that old resolution that the county was gonna pay that prior to the change.
Once we decide what we're gonna do. Right, right now, we haven't made a decision what, what's gonna happen.
I realize.
So it stays, it stays as it is for a.
Have a resolution prior to that.
Yeah. Like once, yeah, once we decide what's gonna happen, then we need to, we need to make a change in that resolution. Right now, it's still there, so we make sure that our buildings are protected.
Sure.
Yeah. Until we find a plan B. Right now, we don't have one.
That's right.
Right. Okay, so I don't think there was any discuss and consi- and, and consider. We have to pay the bill.
We gotta pay it. Do we have to move?
Yes. Have a, have a motion to, uh, pay the invoice, please?
I'll make a motion. We pay invoice for July third payment.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion?
So this July third pa- payment, that's for the whole year?
Correct.
We pay it all one year. We can't divide it up in two payments. Have you ever asked?
I've never asked.
We need to ask again. They'll take it in quarters, they'll take it in halves.
I mean, you're talking traditional insurance. We are not in traditional insurance.
This is self insured.
So.
Insurance is in insurance, is insurance.
And we get a good, we get a healthy reimbursement at the end of the year.
We get a reimbursement. It wasn't as healthy last year as it's been because they have to evaluate not just our losses, but all of their losses and it's tough all over, I guess, so.
Any other discussion?
So I guess my question is if, if, um, we wanna add this to our emergency meeting, based on, um, you know, we, maybe we wanna consider, um, what's decided at the airport authority meeting tomorrow. Cause if we just go ahead and approve this, then the airport could say, well, we're gonna, we're not gonna reimburse you. You've already paid your bill. You've already paid, you know, you're planning to insure this building. So do we leave that? Is there, is there any leverage?
No, I, I think we're still in negotiation. We, we had a pretty good negotiation. Ken and I had met. I think, I think we're headed in the right direction on that.
And it wouldn't make it, I mean, if we sold the building, they would reimburse us for what we've paid.
No.
It's not per building. This is not the same as a traditional insurance would be, where, you know, if I add a car next month, I get an additional premium. No, we're based on what we have now.
Period.
And then we reevaluate it all for, for a year from now. And we have the Oli- we, I bill Olics for that Olic hangar out there. It's within this too and they pay that.
I've seen that.
Yeah, that's, well, that got brought up at our meeting with the airport people and why that one's a little different and why it is the way it is. And I can't reach.
I don't think we wanna hold up our insurance premium, uh, for that discussion, but I, I think we're all headed in the right direction.
They're, they're, they're open for discussion. They're, they're talking about it. They're trying to come up with a solution of some type. They understand what our situation is. Uh, we kind of understand what their solution is. So hopefully we'll, we'll come up with some type of, some type of agreement here till we're finished. All goes well. Okay, any other discussion?
I guess in simple terms there, then, if it would still be insured under this policy, they would simply reimburse us for insurance.
That's correct. That was, that was one of the options.
And I think that's what we're going to do, is pass through every year in order to keep it moving because I don't think they could compete with our rates.
NERMA, NERMA will not, will not insure them off of the NERMA policy, and their outside policies were pretty unreasonable.
Yeah, they're, just look at they had a $50,000 deductible. I mean, they're, I mean, that's basically not having insurance at all.
And our deductibles are pretty low in, where they have-
Very low, like $500.
Very low, yeah.
So, I mean, it's, at least we have coverage, true coverage, I mean, if they have problems.
So it, it appears at least right now for this year, we're going, we're going to pay the premium. It's just a matter of whether we're going to get reimbursed, how much, or whatever the case might be.
That's right.
That's what we're negotiating with right now.
And if Lisa goes with me to the meeting tomorrow, we can, I'm sure that's on the agenda. They have it on every time. They ask me about it every time I go, and I say, I don't have any information for you.
Well, you do now.
So you're asking us to approve the total invoice of 723,359, is that correct? I'd move approval.
I already made a motion.
I already have a first and a motion.
We're in discussion right now.
Okay.
Is there any other, is there any other discussion?
So what's the total increase again? You said 116?
119. Or 116,014. It's 19.10% is what their letter says.
Last year, we paid 607,345 and this year it's 723,359.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Record your votes.
Yes, they did. Already have that.
Okay to close?
Close.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Next items, consider approval of resolution for loan of Keno lottery funds. Lisa?
Okay, we bring this to you every year so we can renew the ability to, to loan money from a couple of the funds, for funds that sometimes fall short. And I can read the resolution and just know it's, first time it's for the Keno Fund and the second time it is for the inheritance fund. Yes. And last year, we brought to you, we also have included the capital improvement fund in past years, but we're, we are not using that and we aren't going to use that as a fu, a fund to borrow from because we really don't need to borrow that much money. So. Whereas special revenue funds, Scottsbluff County at times during the budget year experienced cash flow shortfalls due to payments being due before adequate revenue collections have been made. And whereas a loan transfer of Keno lottery funds can be made to offset these shortages, be it therefore resolved in an amount not to exceed a cumulative total of $300,000, be loaned to the special revenue funds as needed from the Keno Lottery Fund. The Board of Commissioners will be notified as these loans occur as an agenda item in an advertised public meeting. These loans commence on Ju, commence on June 20th and are to be repaid by the special revenue funds that receive loans no later than June 30, 2024. That's basically how it reads for the Keno Fund, and like I said, same thing, only 500,000 for the inheritance fund. And we currently have two loans out of the Keno Fund. That's Heather's office, only been using Keno this year to take care of the shortfalls. And the outstanding amounts are the Voca Fund at $41,000 and the Wing Fund at $62,000. And when I updates on those two shortages, I can tell you Wing Fund, I believe we got $90,000 finally coming in here in the very, like now, if it's not already here. That was last week.
A little more than covered.
It should be fine, finally. This has been a process with, with the Crime Commission. Voca has not, Dave's, what was her title, victim witness gal, worked on the Voca Fund. She did resign from the county May 1st. And this was still outstanding. I asked about it last week and they're still reviewing. The Crime Commission now has a new director. So I'm not sure where, hopefully maybe things are, I guess we're moving along, unless Mark has some updates on that, but anyway, that's, that's my update for you.
Okay, so we have, we have two motions. One for the Keno lottery funds, the other for the inheritance tax funds, right?
Do they have to be separate or can we do them all?
We'll do, we'll do them separately, please. So entertain a motion for the first one, resolution for the loan of Keno lottery funds.
I make a motion to approve the loan of Keno lottery funds.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item is consider the approval of the loan inheritance tax fund. We've already received that information. I entertain a motion for either approval or denial.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for loan of inheritance tax funds.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Two seconds here. You got it from here on.
Okay to close? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Five yeses?
Okay. Motion's approved. We'll go on to the next item, which is discuss and consider capital improvement project request for Gearing Civic Plaza Sculpture Project and Cleveland Field Improvement Project. Brenda?
Can I put something out real quick? I separated those out just in case you guys had an issue with one or the other, just so you know.
Okay, I'll start with my usual disclaimer. All of the money that we're asking for is lodging tax. The purpose of Nebraska lodging tax is either for marketing funds or for capital improvement funds. Any capital improvement funds must be for nonprofit organizations. So our first one on the list is the Gearing Civic Center Plaza sculptures. And the, they want three sculptures to put over in the plaza that will total approximately $83,000. And the capital improvement funds that the committee talked about at our meeting last week was $41,421.04. So that's essentially half of the project. There will be three artists that contribute to the project. So the good thing about that is it's different styles. And so there's a little bit something for everybody if you do it that way. Ferguson, Hanson, and Kaneko are the artists. And a report that was released by, or in Nebraska shows that art contributes to 2.4 of the state's GDP and creates 30,052 jobs. Economically, 50.7 million is generated annually in Nebraska with 9.8 million generated for state and local government. So art is a huge factor for tourism and it's a huge part of the GDP for the state of Nebraska. Now, when you travel across the state, there's over nine locations along I-80 that display different pieces of art. Now, even though Gearing's not on I-80, obviously we would be the 10th location for some of these famous sculptures. And any individual that studies art and travels for art could spend easily a two-day trip traveling across the state. So a lot more revenue then is, is brought in to the different communities just by them traveling to see these art pieces. And another great thing is that once this is all complete, this could easily be a request and added to the Nebraska passport. So then that way, we're sure that even people who are not necessarily fanatics of art would still be able to come out and see these pieces and learn the appreciation for the arts. So aside from those traveling, the three sculptures would enhance our overall downtown appearance. I mean, think about all of the people who will be visiting the plaza this summer. I mean, the cyclists for one. So we would really decorate that downtown area and, and really make it a, a better space for people to visit when they come to Gearing. And the Tourism Committee did recommend that you approve the request for $41,421.04.
Was there any consideration of putting one over in the 18th Street Plaza in Scottsbluff?
You know what, this is just the, the group that is working for the Gearing Civic Plaza, but you know, I have a feeling that that is probably going to be something that will come up here now.
Do you have any projected pictures, prototype? Do you have anything?
I absolutely do, and I would love to show you. I probably should have sent those, but I really didn't know if there would be much, much interest in seeing what they looked like. I do have them.
I say that the appearance and subject matter is very, very important.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, and they're all very good choices. I mean, this committee, they're all artists and really have a heart for this type of thing. So they were able to pick the pieces that were adequate for the space. So there's, yeah. So there's, there's three different ones. One of them is actually a ceramic piece. It is just gorgeous. This will be the one that is by far the most famous. He's a very, very famous artist.
It looks expensive.
Yeah, well, you know.
Some of the art I've seen in San Francisco was artists.
So these have already been selected, would you say?
Yeah, they've selected the pieces that they feel are the best for the spaces in the park. And then here's that map if you'd like to see it, their number, where they would be in the Civic Plaza.
What is this?
So. You know, that's called R-54? 56, I was close, I was minus two, right?
Is it Chinese or?
I, you know what, these ladies would have to answer those questions for you. I don't, I don't have any.
I don't know if it's a word or something.
I don't know.
I don't know if it's a word or a bird.
Good luck on that one, Ray.
Well, the other one is a bird nest. I know that much.
Russ, you can call her whatever you want, buddy.
So I, so I did see them, and I would only say that they're not offensive. And we had a discussion two weeks ago, I don't think you were here, but we had a discussion about some art and that, yeah, and I think Mike's bringing part of that up, that we got to be, when this stuff goes on public property, we got to be pretty neutral with stuff. Certainly can't be controversial subjects that we put out there. And I don't see anything here being controversial. The, I don't see a problem with that. I don't appreciate art as much as I probably should. But, and so I wouldn't know a good piece of art from one that I put together out in my shop somewhere, you know, so. But anyway, I don't have a problem with, with what's being suggested here. And I think Ken's right that we would and probably should expect the same requests coming from Scottsbluff, maybe for their park. And then would this, if this is approved, would this be coming out of this year's budget then, based upon or into next year's budget?
No, into next year. It's not going to really affect our overall number.
For the end of this year?
You know, the projection that we make will be half of the overall expected amount that we bring in and that would put us up towards about the 800,000 mark to start the year, so we're fine. I mean, I know that we're going to have a lot more projects coming in, though. I mean, a lot more capital improvement. So, you know, this year, you'll probably see a lot more, I mean, than you want to.
We're fine with it coming.
Yeah, the capital improvement fund has definitely been a lot of requests lately, a lot of big projects going on. So I hope my projections for the next year are right so that we have some money to spend in the community.
What, that number again was 41,000 what?
Um, 41,000. Now my papers are all messed up.
421.04.
Yeah, 421.04.
Okay, thank you.
We're in the wrong business. We just got to spend a while to set together and paint it.
I know, right?
Really?
I'm in the wrong business, but I don't know if I can make anything with this good.
Hunter Biden did well with his, but.
I got a question for you. Is there anything in the works to enhance the opportunity of local artists?
Um, you know, they, Gretchen or Rita, would you like to help me with that question?
Well, we chose well-known artists that would increase tourist appeal. People are traveling, come to see the Kineko. So they're from Omaha. The Kineko is the big piece that attracts people. He's an internationally known artist, Japanese American, he lives in Omaha. Has been working for him a long time. Yeah, he has pieces everywhere. Catherine Ferguson is also a Omaha artist, and hers is the Bird Bowl in bronze. It's a piece of, and I can't remember the past piece. He's very well-known also. There's very A-list sculptors. And then Hanson is a welder from Lincoln. And that beautiful piece that appears like it's airborne is his. But there are good artists locally. The pieces are at higher levels than that. So for this, three pieces, we're looking for something.
Now, are these already built?
Um, the Kineko is-
You're purchasing them or are she going to, are they going to re-manipulate them?
They have been made, yeah, two of them. The Kineko piece is there.
We're thinking constantly about economic development, and we have so much to offer here in this community and in the county and in this part of the state. We have so much. We have history. We have geography. We have art. And we haven't got any art of this level here. And we want people to come here to see the Trails Home Bronze at the Civic Center and to visit Chimney Rock and Scottsbluff National Monument and Legacy of the Plains. Dave was teasing me the other day. We want them to come to visit all those things, and one extension of that would be fine art. And these are internationally known, especially Kineko, internationally known artists. So we want to have another extension of all that we have to offer to bring people here. We have Oregon Trail Art Show, which we're very involved in, and we feature lots of local artists there. And then West of Nebraska Art Center constantly has shows. Gretchen has shown there. And we feature local art there. So we, we try to do it all. We're aiming to do it all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion we approve the $41,421.04.
Well, that would be both the, the capital improvement for the Gearing Plaza and the Cleveland Field Improvement Project, right?
No.
No, that's, that's just the-
Okay, I missed that part.
Yeah.
And she wants it on a separate motion, Kelly does anyway, so.
Yeah, she separated them, so you can do them separate now.
Okay.
Did we have a second?
Did you get a sec?
I don't think so.
We have a motion, and there is a second. Is there any further discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Okay, now are we voting separately on the Cleveland Field?
Yes, and I'll present that now. It's the same deal, capital improvement funds. And last fall, we gave Cleveland Field $50,000 for the first phase of the renovation. And as soon as the weather cooperates with them, they will get those improvements made. But that was to complete some of the, the drainage on the infield and then some of the infield turf. So now they are ready to start Phase Two, and they are requesting an additional $50,000 for quality fencing. They want to upgrade locker rooms, dugouts, the concession stands, a press box, and the overall parking area. The total cost for the overall project, all of the phases together, is $1.4 million. And the Tourism Committee determined that these upgrades should be considered and approved because there are only two Legion baseball fields in the community, and that's just something that we would really like to keep going is Legion Ball. And these upgrades would allow more for both regional and state tournaments for the kids that play in, in that level of ball. which obviously means, you know, it would secure more overnight visits with the kids and their families coming in to spend the night for weekend and state and regional tournaments. And plus, we would hate to see the property dilapitate, you know, and if it goes much longer, you know, it's just gonna continue to need more and more repairs. So the Tourism Committee asked that your recommendation be to give the additional fifty thousand dollars for Phase Two of Cleveland Field.
Who maintains it now? Is that city funds, or who pays for the maintenance and whatever on the field now?
So this came up at the Tourism Committee meeting, you know, that the city of Scottsbluff owns Cleveland Field, and there's just been, there hasn't been much money put into Cleveland Field for maintenance or upkeep or anything like that. We did get word that there's, that it's going to change moving, going forward. For instance, the WNCC plays at Cleveland Field, and they've been paying the five hundred dollars a year.
I thought it was a thousand.
They're gonna increase it to two thousand dollars a year, and that's gonna go into a sinking fund for improvements at Cleveland Field with the goal of replacing the turf at the end of the turf's life. So we are getting more of a commitment from the city of Scottsbluff to invest there.
Right now, all they do is mowing and some spraying.
Are these matching funds? Is anybody matching us?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm finding.
Dr. Webb is a huge part of a lot of the matching.
But I mean, is he actually putting in fifty? We're putting in fifty. Is that where we're at?
He's probably matching us five to one.
Yeah, I'm sure probably in the end he is, but that was the deal that we made the first time in, so he...
As long as there's somebody else back there waving their arms too.
The one point four million, is that something that the overall project is for that? Including private and public money and this type of money and that type of thing?
Yes, that will be all the phases.
And I would assume that this would support our overall sports tourism goal that we just went through the fellow being here and recommendations that he had and that type of thing?
It never hurts to have multiple fields that are playable for baseball in the area. If we can just add one more to the list that is safe and has been refurbished, then it's just more teams we can bring in. We need a few more hotels if you can arrange that.
The size of field is compatible for Legion Ball, college baseball, and semi-pro and pro baseball, right?
Yes.
Those, the overall size of the field is big enough.
Softball's the only one that's different.
Right, so. All right, I'm okay with it.
I would move to grant the Cleveland Field project at fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close, please. Thank you, Brenda, and you're welcome to come whenever you want to.
You have five yeses?
Even if you just wanna sit and visit, that's okay. All right. Next item discussed and considered, the approval of the County Clerk's signature on the S D L. A special designated license for B and R Entertainment LLC Heights Tavern, please. Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
Oh, I'm good.
I'm Ben Rodriguez from B R Entertainment, part owner of Heights Tavern. So essentially, for the S D L, we want to be approved to basically do like a beer garden at the Drive-In Theater. We would have wristbands for IDs, our own designated area, and everything that would be required to do so.
Didn't we, did we not approve a beer garden at the theater?
I believe the flyover did one before, yes.
So are you, is that gonna be a second one, or?
It would be, I'm not sure if they actually did it with the weather.
So that was just a one-time deal, right?
Yeah, I think that was just...
And you're asking for all summer or a one-time?
Just a one-time deal.
A one-time deal, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And you have the map on the back of that.
Okay, Sheriff? Uh-oh, he's smirking. Be careful. Be careful.
Well, I do know this young man, and I've researched this, and he's been running Heights Tavern for, what, about a year?
Soon to be a year, yes.
Soon to be a year, and there have been no issues there. So I recommend approval.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Good. And did you buy Heights Tavern?
Yes, we purchased it last year.
Did you? Still doing burgers?
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Especially made for you.
Best burgers in the world, I'm telling you.
I'd have to agree.
There's no doubt.
This is still gonna have this fenced-in area like we said.
Everything, and they'll all, they'll check all of that and met all the requirements and everything else. Awesome. Well, good luck on your venture.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome. Okay. What's the board's pleasure, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the S D L.
One second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay to close?
Close.
And you have five yeses?
Yeah. My kids did buy me a Blackstone Grill last year for Father's Day, so I can make my own Heights Tavern burgers. But I will be down there.
I'm not sure if it'll be the same, but...
I know they won't. There's something on yours that makes them taste better. Thank you very much. All right, next item. Excuse me?
Hey, sir.
Yes.
You asked if this could be the one-time thing. Can we make it versus the summer?
That's up to the Liquor Commission.
That's something, yeah, we'll have to talk to state. We'll have to talk to state.
Yeah, that's the state's decision, yeah. And then you bring it back to us for approval.
Sheriff, I don't think it's allowed, and it's a special designated license.
Every time that you're gonna do it, yeah. Okay. All right, good luck to you.
Didn't we do something for Papa Moon to do multiple?
He comes here with a separate one on each date he's having the event, though.
Yeah.
Comes with a stack.
Yeah.
So they are, they are separate.
They're separate.
Could you tell them that when, or suggest that to them next time they come?
Well, I just told him.
To do a whole stack?
Oh, I will. Oh, my gosh. Oh, no. What happened? My...
We're, there's nothing else to vote on, so we're okay.
Wow. Okay.
We're okay.
Thank you. I feel better now.
Okay, next item is discussed, the 2023 Property Value Protest Hearings. And I'd ask to put that on the agenda. Carrie, if you wanna come back to the podium, put your armor on, whatever else, your face shield, your helmet, your chest plate, whatever else. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for taking the opportunity to come up here. And we know it's tough, but this is, this is a tough year. It's a really, really a tough year. And I'm sure you do. And I'll start out with a couple of questions I have, and then we'll open it up to the rest of the board.
See what I can do.
What's that?
I see what I can do.
Well, do the best you can.
Yes, sir.
How are we doing on protests?
I have a count, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
We had a ninety, a hundred and ninety-four as of like four o'clock today.
We still have a ways to go yet, I assume. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, second question. I'm getting several folks that are telling me that the Assessor's Office is not accepting recent sales. You know, for as long as I've been on, the last two years sale, if you sold your property, that we accepted that as what the valuation would be. Why is that changed?
I can tell you that I, I have, when state was in, state was saying that was like chasing sales, so we were not to use sales like that.
Was that an order for them or a suggestion?
Yes, order. So it's, it's, you know, per statute, you know, we have to follow what state says, and they were here, so I heard them talk about that.
Is there a statute that covers that?
It's chasing sales. That's what they spoke of. So you'll have to go in deeper with Angie, with the state being here. She can tell you exactly what they said.
I'd like to see a statute on that as well.
Well, the sale, the sale is the best thing you can have, is what the value of the property is.
We can't just not have a non-protest on it.
You're not, you're not chasing the sale.
No, we have to go through protest. They have to protest on the sale.
Exactly, the protesters...
We can't just say like we normally do, okay, it's good. You know, it has to go through you guys, 'cause it makes it look like we are chasing sales. So we have to have them come and protest. That I know.
You can't do no hearing needed.
No, no, that's what state was talking about. So that's why we did what we did.
Again, was that a suggestion, or was that an order from them?
That was an order from them. We were told not to... Mark loose called and said we are not to do it that way. Yes.
I don't think it was an order. I'm gonna pull the letter here. I do, I do believe it was a strong suggestion, but I do not think it was an order.
And the suggestion was directed towards us.
Yeah, to let you guys do the protests, yes.
Right.
Not for us to do it.
Because I think they, they told you, they were able to tell you firsthand.
Yes.
But the note in the letter was directed towards us.
And, you know, worst case scenario, folks can file their protest, and they don't have to, they don't even have to come to the hearing. We could have a hearing without the property only present and approve their requested value at the sale price.
If they provide the documentation for it.
If they, yeah, yeah, just like they would for no hearing needed.
Yes, we still ask for all that and still are asking for them to bring it for you as well.
But what Charlie is saying, that they don't have to take time off work to come in here and meet before us.
That would be your choice. You can work that out. I don't see why not.
We don't have that opportunity. That comes from, that comes from the clerk's office, in your office.
We, we can't, they have to protest. We strongly suggest that we are not to do that 'cause we chase sales. Now, you guys have to determine if you just wanna see them for those minutes. Like, I asked Angie a question, too. Has anybody gone to any kind of protest anywhere else in any other county? She said no. And I said, well, what do they do in other counties? Some, one county takes protests, and they see people and they're less than their fifteen minute. And then later on, they all get together, make a decision with their heads together, and make a decision so they don't see pressure. But that's another county. I don't know. It might be smaller.
Let me give, let me give you an example. I get my card, okay, and I come into you. I come into your office, not to you. I come into your office, and I say, this is just way too high. It's not right, you know. I just bought my house. Or whatever the case might be. And they never see me at protest.
I ask them to protest. I ask them to go ahead and use...
No, what I'm saying is, I can, I can give you hundreds of people that never showed up here for protest, that it was settled down in the Assessor's Office before it got up here.
That's exactly right. They have been in the past.
I don't, I don't know what to tell you on that part. I'm just telling you the ones that come to protest for me, when they come to my window or the window, I help them make what I can, but we can't do it with no hearing.
So nothing is settled in that office. Everything has to come to us.
It goes to the clerk's office and then to you, yes.
Then it should stick. If we're gonna be the decision maker, then it should stick. 'Cause it doesn't stick unless you guys make the decision, right?
You guys have to make the decision, right? Because it's on sale. We can't, I don't know what to tell you. We can't chase sales. It is something we are not to do. Told by state.
What does it mean to, what does it mean to chase a sale?
Meaning like, okay, that's the sale price. Well, we'll go ahead and do it, you know. Well, we're chasing sales by us agreeing to what is a sale.
Isn't that the true value of something when it's on, had been sold?
We take it for how long? Two years, you allow? Two years? So what happens in those two years of sales? Don't you think it went up any? In a good sale years? I think it went up.
Might have. If the dollar goes up, but the dollar's going down.
So if we, all right, so then you fix it for the sale amount, and the next year we roll, like we're supposed to roll, and it comes off and it goes right back up to what the value is. So you guys have to make that decision.
The dollar is worth fifty percent of what it was.
The difference, the difference being...
What we used last two years of sales, not this year, is failing us. The last two years, not this year.
The difference in chasing sales, and I'm a classic example because it happened to me. And I won't mention the names, 'cause it was prior to you guys. When I purchased my house, the next year, my valuation went up to the purchase price. That's chasing sales.
Yes, it is.
That's chasing sales.
And so in their, in their eyes, doing this as well as to. I'm just standing what I was told and heard from the state, so.
But the purchase price, the purchase price should be what the value of that property is, correct?
What is your, what is your information that's...
I don't have the letter.
I don't have the letter.
I do have the letter. Charlie does, too. You wanna read it, Charlie, that one paragraph or two paragraphs, sir?
'Cause I don't have it either. I don't. Do you have it, Kelly?
I have it right here. There's really no direction. Says during the discussion with the assessor regarding the protest process, a procedure was described as no hearing needed. This is used when a sale of the protested property existed within the past two years at a price lower than the assessed value. The assessor at the direction of the County Board of Equalization will recommend a value at the sale price. This is systematic sales chasing and causes disequalization and cannot be maintained through the assessor's valuation models. The assessor has dealt with this by recalculating Kama values each year. However, sold properties should be reviewed like all others, and recommendations for change should be based on market and property characteristics that impact value, not merely the sale price. In addition to creating equalization problems, this process invites protests as taxpayers learn the policy of the CBOE. The division teammates are willing to discuss the process with the CBOE, Board of Equalization. Further, should that be helpful, that there's no direction in there telling us to stop explicitly.
There's no statute, there is anything else.
She doesn't, she doesn't, she does not quote, she does not quote a statute. She says she's willing to work with us to think of, come up with a different process, but she's not telling us to quit. I mean, she would like us to quit, but she's not telling us to quit doing this process. The sale, the sale of the property is, is its market value. We make, we make sure, one of our, one of our items is to make sure that it's an arm's length transaction. And we, you know, if we get a sale where it's clearly not an arm's length transaction, we, we don't accept that as the value. But in this, I mean, they don't like what we're doing, but that's, it's our prerogative.
Because in the letter, we say an appraisal or a recent sale. I believe that's stated in the letter. We've been doing it for twenty years, or at least the twenty years that I've been here.
In which one?
The letter that went out. For the protest, when they, when they do the protest, telling them that they need to bring comparables and all that kinda stuff.
So has that letter changed? Have we changed? I mean, that's our letter, so.
We update the years and what percent we're at, I believe.
So if we're still, if people come to file a protest, and that's the letter, that's the information that we're giving, and we need to, we need to stick with that. We can't, we can't do anything different. We shouldn't do anything different than what, we're putting it in writing that we will accept the recent sale. We have to stick with that. And I hope, is there any sort of record on, on...
Okay, so if that...
Hold on, just hold on. Is there a, is there a list of folks who have brought in a recent sale to protest? Or have we just turned them away?
We don't, no. We don't, we don't turn them away. If they have a sale, we make sure they have all the information, and they go to Kelly. So I don't know what Kelly does, if she makes a separate list. We haven't got, we've just got our pile back from you, and we're putting them in the system to break them down, who's what, and I don't know if she breaks down the list to... She used to pull them, right, and no hearing needed, but I think it, as it refers, that they would rather have you guys... What I heard was they were taking it out of Angie's hands before it comes to them. They're not saying you can't do it. They're telling Angie to not do it for you, is what I heard from what you just read. Is that what you...
There have been numerous people that have told me they came to the Assessor's Office, and the Assessor's Office has said, we're not doing that. We're not doing that anymore. Sales, recent sales don't matter.
I have not said that. I don't know. I have not said that, I don't know.
I, I, I don't know who said it either, but.
Either, because that's not true.
I, well, then, then I, I, I can give you half a dozen people that are lying to me then.
Come back with their half a dozen people, we'll make sure it gets taken care of that way, because I am not the one telling them, I'm making sure you get the information you need. So that you, if you choose to do so, you guys can choose to do so, we just cannot do it with no hearing needed.
Right, I, I think what I'm understanding is that, um, I mean, certainly if somebody wants to protest, they're gonna pro, we let them protest, right? We never tells, we never would tell someone they can't protest.
Whether it's a no hearing needed or not, they try to protest.
The case is, we would never tell someone they couldn't protest.
Correct.
Alright, so, that being said, um, the, the story here is, is that, yeah, the state's telling Angie's office that they should not use a sale by itself to do the early no hearing needed.
Correct.
Without our approval at the county board of equalization.
Correct.
That's the, that's what's being said here, she shouldn't do that.
Cause by statute, we cannot chase sales. So they're putting it into your hands, not ours.
And what had been happening previously, if we go through this letter, talks about if, if there was a sale within the last two years, Angie could and did, um, change it to the value of the sale. And we ratified it up here in a group of.
On the, on the no hearing needed ones, we did that after, that's right.
But we ratified it up here, it wasn't done just in her office.
But they didn't have to come here in front of us.
That's right, they didn't have to come, because they knew that Angie was gonna recommend.
She negotiated a lot of those.
Yes, absolutely.
That kinda thing happens if, if we all understand it that way.
It did.
That's what did, and there, the state is saying that, um, using, I'm gonna suggest to say that using the sale by itself, and only the sale, in the state's opinion is not enough. That should be one factor.
Yes, sir.
In the, the assessment and valuation process. But not merely the sales price is their language in this letter.
Yes.
It's not just that that determines, and I have been of the opinion on a few occasions, that even when people come in front of us and we talk about new houses, new construction, we've had, we've had people that have come here. They have built a three hundred thousand dollar house, they've come and told us, and showed us invoices of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in materials, fifty thousand in sweat equity. And we've given a valuation of a hundred and thirty thousand, and I'm thinking, well, that ain't right, that's not what that house is worth. And I, uh, I don't, that's not fair to everybody, we're a board of equalization.
Yes, sir.
We're trying to equalize properties at, at a value that's about full.
Equal.
Yeah, ninety, what are we, ninety-four to a hundred percent?
Yes, sir.
On, on residential.
Residential, right. So anyway, I understand part of that point, that it can't be merely that, but it certainly should be part of the equation. Because sales price, I mean, again, if it's a full-blown arms-length transaction then that to me is pretty high on my list about what real value is.
What the value of that property should be.
Yeah, it oughta be a, it oughta rank higher than some of the other criteria we use. But I'll agree that it can't be the only thing.
Thank you.
I would, I would say that we're not chasing sales when that happens. In fact, the sale is coming to us, and, in a lot of cases almost at ninety-nine point nine percent of the cases we've seen, we've heard in the last four years, is, you know the sale price is lower than the assessed price, and we're helping to equalize by using that, that sale price. If we take the assessed value instead of the sale value, then we're artificially inflating the market. We need to stick to the sale price. If we don't stick to the sale price, and we, and we take in some other variables, or if we're not, you know, maybe the sale price needs to be weighted. I think it's kinda what Harris is saying, you know, maybe it's ninety-nine percent of what should be considered when assessing the value. But if, if, if it sells for two fifty, and the assessor has it at three fifty, if we go anywhere higher than the sale price, we are inflating the market.
We're doing it, and then everything else inflates around it.
Yes.
Well, and, we have to also keep in mind that, you know, they're charged with doing mass appraisals. Neighborhood appraisals, and if there's one that you say, man, that, that seems high. Then ultimately, the next year, it's gonna bring that neighborhood up some, and we're all aware of sales that man, I had one in my neighborhood just the other day, and I'm thinking, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than I ever thought a house would sell for in my neighborhood. And, um, so we have it, we have sales on the high side, and sometimes we have sales on the low side. Of, of what even in our own minds, we're thinking is a reasonable number, and, um but I, I think, at least from the letter and rereading it as you did, Charlie, the, that it's, uh I think they're merely saying that the county assessor should not make that, um, no hearing needed and just blank it, uh, without it coming here and us approving it. In my opinion, that's what, that's what the state's saying.
Which was, that's how it was done in the past.
No, it's, it's my understanding that the letter that we, the letter that gets handed to the protester is a letter from the board of equalization, it is not a letter from the assessor, it is, it is the board of equalization telling that property, telling that property.
I was just like, I wish I did.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find it here, and I can't, I can't come up with it.
One is sales, and.
Can you pull it up there? Where we got the screen for?
I don't, I don't.
Can you go to the county website?
There's three, there's sales comparison, there's sales, and then.
Well, it's, it's a letter that would be handed to somebody when they protest.
Three options you guys are looking for, when they come to protest.
A recent appraisal.
Right, and then comparables, so there's one, two, and three of your.
Yeah, so, so.
And I don't really care what's in the letter.
We can't.
I don't really care what's in the letter, my, my, my contention is that it's not the assessor telling the protester. It is the board of equalization telling the protester, so, and, so, just like the state said. It should not be the assessors, the, the assessor should not be doing that, so the, and they're not doing it, we are doing it. Because it's on our letterhead, it's not on her letterhead. So, the, the assessor's already doing what the state has asked them to do, or instructed them to do.
Protest form, try that one, protest form, protest cover page, there you go. There you go. I do.
Tell me when.
Proof of, proof of recent sale or subject property generally within the last twenty-four months. So, so I guess, and I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, is that, when, when people bring their, their thing to you. Is any of that ever fixed in that office before it comes to us?
It used to where Angie would go, uh, pull all the ones that were sales, and send them back up to you for, okay, as in, you know, a sales, as a, a sale within the two years. And then you guys went and approved it, but I think they wanna keep us out of that part, and just have it come up here, and you guys do your stuff.
Okay, alright, let's, let's forget about sales, let's, let's, let's forget about somebody who came to you and said, boy, this is just not good, this is terrible.
Okay.
And you take another look at it, for whatever reason, are changes made in that office, or do we just come up here and protest?
No, I, I can tell you, let's say, let's give, why don't you give me an example, like, okay, like this guy came today, he says, um I have a problem in my house, um, I have no kitchen, it's all out of this house, you know, there's no use of this kitchen. So, we have, we will go and review this house, take pictures, review it, and it'll be changed per, per putting it in the computer as no value for the kitchen, you know, lowering it because there's no, you know, it's all torn out.
So that's prior to them protesting then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have to go and.
So you'll lower that for them?
We'll lower it because it is true, it is showing no value in that kitchen.
You can look at it?
Yes, sir, we do.
But after they protest, after the protest has been fore, or filed.
Yes.
Then, then it's a done deal, then they have to come here.
Well, then, she'll get the protest, and she knows that we've gone out and reviewed that, then she's gonna see what it does in the system, that we go and take off this kitchen and all these issues in this house, and with that perspective, and all the depreciation, all that, then there's a value. And she'll call the person and say, hey, this is what in the system we have come up with, are you okay with this value? If they are not okay with it, then they will come up and protest for the value they are looking for, if they're okay with it, then there will be no hearing.
So you can make that determination of a whole, no, no hearing needed.
We have to, we do it differently, because we go out, review what the problem is, and actually take pictures, actually see what we're doing, and actually touching what we're doing.
Okay, but if they bring you proof, if they bring you comparables, if they bring something, then it comes back up here to us, is that right?
See what state asks us to do, I'm just doing what, I'm just.
And that's just, and, and that's just on sales.
Yes.
Okay, that's just on sales, but if, but if somebody's, if somebody comes to you.
We've been living in their house for five years, we've been living there five years, they bring you comparables.
Then we, well, no, we don't do it on comparables, that's, that's your decision.
That's, that's all up to us, af- after the protest has been filed, okay.
They used to lower those prior.
Seem, it seems to me that it used to, but I don't, I don't remember.
And if she sees that there is compare, I don't know, I don't think so, I can't remember that, maybe she did, but I don't know, but the sales part, what we were told she's just trying to be, you know, in compliance.
She cut her protest in half last year, just by negotiating.
Settled downstairs before they came up here.
Yeah, that's great, I wish we could do that all around the board.
So, how, how did that happen?
I wouldn't hear.
This, this does say, the letter that comes from commissioners, says, there are generally three items that may be considered. And it includes the certified appraisal, the recent sale.
Yes.
And comparison to similar properties.
The three together.
And it says, um, if they may be considered.
Yes.
They're not guaranteed anything there.
No.
It just says that information would probably be used by us.
It can be used by the assessor as well, I believe she can, uh, change those as well.
I think maybe, but many times it's gonna be too late, I mean, they're already gonna be in the protest mode.
Well, we still look at them before they come up and review, like we do with the reviews, we go out personally and see, like settling issues and you know, over there by the monument issue, you know, remember when we had the water problem, I think you were part of that too? We had to go out and review all those houses, there's two feet of water and all the other things, that was a mess, but we had to go out and take pictures and review and do the changes.
Got another question, so, we've, we've established that, um, we've got all the residentials at ninety-five percent of market value. Is that right? So why don't we aim for ninety-two percent?
Residential's ninety-two to a hundred percent.
So why don't we aim for ninety-two percent?
Why don't we aim for what?
Ninety-two percent, why are we valuing everything at ninety-five percent instead of ninety-two percent?
I don't, I don't know why that's on there, I don't know, mistakes, always my letter, I don't, I don't know. You know, you guys, ninety-five percent to a hundred percent, it's ninety-two to a hundred percent is our value, okay? The commercial, the commercial's right, and the agriculture's right, the residential.
Resident, what she's saying is that's where it currently sits.
Yes.
Isn't this what, uh, is it at seventy-four on Ag? Ninety-two to a hundred percent is, is what statutory, she is required to
be in.
To, to be in compliance, ninety-two to a hundred, residential, commercial, ninety-two to a hundred. Ag, sixty-nine to seventy-five, she also presented, and it's a note on the back of your wall, or where the copier used to be. Cause I haven't been there in a while, sorry, um, I believe, they had the percentages, and I believe it was also published somewhere. Like in the paper, it might be.
I have it in my book, I should have brought my book up.
So it's telling where she sits within those numbers, and I believe residential was at ninety-five. I believe Ag may have been at seventy-four, I could be wrong, I don't remember.
I think it was seventy-four.
But, I don't have any idea where commercial is sitting.
Be alright if they'd leave the goalposts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish they could kick one too.
Well, they leave that goalpost the same, ninety to a hundred.
Yes, but they moved the hundred percent up here, right, they raised that, they changed those values.
Those values go up, yeah, there's no doubt, but the ninety-two to a hundred, that stayed the same for decades, I think.
I agree with that, but they raised the value of it, they're gonna raise those values, and your percentage just jumps up, so.
In your opinion, in that, under C, let's see, where are we at here? Under three, if protest is filed, the property is reevaluated, and the valuation could be raised or lowered to achieve equalization.
Yes.
That's, that comes out of your office and not from this board, is that correct? Is, is, is that what it's saying?
On your letter, that you talked about. I believe that's what this is.
Between us and you.
So is that something that can happen in your office?
Well, we already talked about that, I go out and review houses that have no kitchens, it can happen in there, me reviewing, taking pictures and knowing.
But that, but in, in your opinion, when you, when you say, uh, providing, I lost it again. If protest, if the property is reevaluated, that means that you go out and, and actually take a look, it doesn't mean in the office looking at documentation, okay?
So for every protest that's filed, you guys go to the house?
No, no.
That's what he's asking.
When I, what I just said the ones that we see, or know of, that have bad issues with the homes, we do go out and review them and take pictures.
If, if you've been notified of it?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna know everybody's stuff.
You have responsibilities on the property owner, uh, to reveal that information, if they have it, then they check it out.
Well, I think that, then, number three needs to, we need to change the words in number three, cause at number three, it says if a protest is filed, the property is reevaluated. Doesn't say if they bring pictures, or if they tell us the kitchen is missing, or if.
Well, you know, if that's what you need to do, but when they do come to us, we absolutely try to do our very best to do what's right for the owners, here's no.
How you can cover, I mean, they're gonna have, well, probably more than a couple hundred, I don't know how you're gonna get that all done in two weeks.
It, it, it does get not, I'm, it gets reevaluated to the extent that um, if they're coming here for protest, they're being reevaluated by these folks before they ever get here. They're gonna be able to either substantiate what they have, or suggest a change, or whatever. Um, and when, when I'm using the, or seeing the term reevaluate, that means we're gonna take a look at the information that we have, the written information in front of us, and only if they bring up something that would be saying yeah, but I have a kitchen that's totally tore out, then you might go out there and take a look at it, but, um.
And we have right here too, we've gone out and sent our people out.
Right, oh, on the spot, I, we've been here protesting, Angie or Amy said, hey, we'll go look at that at one o'clock today, we'll meet you, and then they come back here and we continue our discussion.
And sometimes we do it earlier.
Yeah, and number two covers that, if a protest is filed, it is the property owner's responsibility to prove that error is, is it that, to prove the error in valuation, there are generally three items that may be considered, and that, that's what it's talked about.
If they're comparing, if they're comparing to one property, they need to compare more than one property.
Yes, I do ask them to do that, and I even help them, you know, I tell them, I even try to help them all, whatever I can do to help, because that's only gonna help all of us, you know?
Well, well, I think I, yeah, I should say it now, and that's the, one thing that I think could be helpful for, surely it would make it easier for, um, Angie, for you, for everybody in that assessor's office. For everybody here, and that's, and the public, and that's, is there anything that we could put in writing that explains some of this to the public in plain, common, day language? Um, without a bunch of real, um, technical verbiage that could help people understand the process? And that we would be able to hand it to them and or send it to them when they protest, um. I mean, if I was in Angie's shoes, I would create something that helps explain the process.
Kind of dummy it down?
And what I use, how I do the appraisal process. Um, I mean, we go through, of course, a lot of this, year after year after year. We start to get familiar with somewhat how it works. But if we could put that into a written form to let the property owners know, that'd be great.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, so this is one of them.
Well, this is from I double A O, which is a place we take classes. For continuing Ed. I have not read it, I'm just pulling it up, it's on the assessor page, so you guys can look at it. This is something we've handed out since I worked over there too, valuation versus taxes. So I don't know if it's common language for property owners, or if it would be easier to understand. But these are a couple of things that are out there on the website. If we need to adjust this commissioner letter, the thi- the, the problem we're gonna have is we've handed out two weeks, three weeks worth of this already. So we are gonna be treating protesters equally, in that sense.
I'm not sure it's wise to change it now, but if we're gonna do it, let's do it for next year.
I believe when Angie got this word from state, her words to them was, she'd, she can't go backwards on where she's already put, no hearing needed. But she has taken their advice, moving forward and letting you guys know that.
Couldn't we have a printout of that, laying out here to where they can pick it up, a lot of people sit here thirty minutes to an hour, and they.
These get handed out.
They get handed out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, when they get to protest form, they get, they, they're given one.
Everyone that comes to protest, I hand them one.
They handle it.
And I help them, yeah, highlight things, I say, oh, let me help you with whatever we can get you to, I would say, so bring your new paperwork. So we can attach it to the protest form, so we can help you with that.
Is everybody in your office familiar with this and what the procedure is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What's the mile radius the comparables are down on? Do you have certain radius that you do these comparables on?
No, they're, on sales comparable, there's not a mile radius, it's on neighborhoods. So it'd be six, seven blocks in different neighborhoods, depending on how many blocks there is per neighborhood. We had a map that was on a neighborhood map.
How about the country area?
Yeah, they, um, country, it just, it's, uh, forty-five hundred, it's like out there. Forty-five hundred here, forty-five hundred here.
We speak the same language there.
Yeah, green.
Black dirt's a lot different than cells in the alkaline dirt.
Well, we, we do have soil allowances on our mapping, and we do use those, like one A, two A, three A, whatever your soils are. So if your soil was alkaline, and it was like a four A's way down there compared to everybody else, it's just value you set for your land. Um, a lot of people need to come and wait F S A, if you have, if you have any.
He did that, when we had our meeting with these guys, the last time we got all that changed, it, it wasn't done that week, until we came. We, we did the protest to get that to happen.
Okay, so was it the.
So it worked.
But it, so it worked. But it, you gotta change.
Yeah. You gotta change.
I, I even get, I even took it to Turk in Boston.
Yeah.
For the, for your soils?
Yes.
Did you have them tested or everything?
I can use the N R C S.
Yeah, we use your website.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, they did not agree with it.
I could do no more than the N R C S, whatever.
I know, it's just, that's why we're all at a candidate.
Yeah, I don't know, because I, I mean, we use, I mean, with the mapping, you know, we use the soils and.
Well, we get the F S A. Steve, in answer, in answer to your question, on a residential, a residential house located in south of Malbida or by Lyman, is gonna be, it's gonna be kind of the same.
Small towns, they're small towns.
No, what I'm talking about, out, out in the country, I'm not, I'm not talking about within, within a village or anyplace else. If you're on a hundred and sixty acre farm, and your house went up, and if that farm is located in Lyman or someplace else, you're looking at the house. As, as, as opposed to living in Upper Wilana, or Westmore, or someplace else, wi- within an incorporated city. That's what, that's where that difference is, that's how I look at it anyway.
Yeah.
And that's what you just said, with the neighborhood, you said forty-five hundred here and forty-five hundred there.
And then the neighborhoods in, in town, there's six, eight block areas, and they're.
But, but if you're gonna do a comparison on your house, in the country, you find another home that is comparable to your home in the country.
Yes, sir.
You have a well, you have a septic, you have barns, you have whatever.
It doesn't have to be within a certain range.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you can, I, somewhere within the county, that's what I'm gonna look at.
You have to find something comparable to the farm.
And are you gonna show us that when we come in to protest, because what?
The neighborhood?
What, yeah, what you protest, or what, what you used for our comparable. Do we, are we allowed to ask you for, to show us the comparable?
We, we don't, but we're mass, so the people that come in, they have to bring those up, we're a mass appraisal.
We're just reporting our neighbors, so their taxes go up mixed, no, I think we need to change that, I think you need to show us how you arrived.
No, no, we did, with our mass appraisals, we don't do your ne- your house and your house, we don't individually do it. We're a mass appraisal by sales.
That is wrong.
You always picking on my house.
Okay, my, my chess plate's getting bigger.
Oh, no, just kidding, Gary.
So, so how does? How do you do mass appraisal without?
By sales, in the neighborhoods, all the sales, we got them downstairs.
We just got done talking about not using the sales.
What are you talking about, I'm talking about a mass appraisal, we have to do that, a sales, with our sales.
Now, didn't.
But now we can't use them to verify.
It doesn't work yet, it doesn't, it's not.
Did, did Scotts Bluff, the whole city of Scotts Bluff go up?
Yes.
So, so we used the whole city of Scotts Bluff as one, one sale? I, I, I understood the whole city went up.
The whole, it did, and what happened the last two years? What happened to the sales the last two years?
And you're saying that each neighborhood justified that?
I would say yes.
I don't think my neighborhood did, cause I don't have a country club sign in front of it, but I'm gonna have to get one.
Okay, and that, that was my, cause I know, last, was it last year, I think Scotts Bluff went up like ten percent? And then we had, all of Scotts Bluff went up again, ten percent, and I, I, I think Gary did too, did it, I believe. The whole, the whole city, not, not, not just market areas, but the whole, the whole city went up.
Yes.
So that, that.
So like Minutair, I would say that's a whole neighborhood, Minutair, I mean, you're small towns, like Lyman, Malbida.
Yeah, that'd be hard to have market, market areas in the small, but Scotts Bluff, you have several market areas.
Yes, we did.
But we didn't do market areas, we did the whole, the whole city, right?
No, he, she had to do market areas.
So we did, we did market areas and a blanket increase for the whole city, both.
He had to do that. You, you know.
Okay.
I don't know what to tell you.
You did market areas, but your ninety to a, two to a hundred percent said fifteen percent in all areas on the buildings.
Yes.
And that wasn't Gary's fifteen percent on the buildings?
Yes, improvements only, no man, yes.
So, but, but, but you also did market areas on top of that.
Yeah, she has to look at the whole sales areas and the markets to bring it together as one and do the fifteen percent, you have. You can't just go, oh, let's just gather this all together, and we all, you have to go around to your market area to find your sales comparisons, so.
So is, isn't that just kind of a, what, what is the probability of every market area moving fifteen percent? What is the probability of that? Z- I mean, I'd say it's zero, I mean, that's gotta be like a one in the two million chance.
You guys need to go see the sales study books, that.
We got them.
That they go over with all the.
Market areas, I don't, I, I don't have a problem with market areas, I think, I think you're, you're, you're right on with, if a particular market area had a ton of sales in it, and that needs to be brought up to something, but a whole.
Ton of sales, all over Scotts.
But, but, but we kinda got doubled, that, that's what I'm hearing, is that we had market sales, had market area increases, plus the entire city was increased also, on top of the market areas. Which is why some of these folks got some pretty hefty increases.
I did too.
Yeah, well, I, I did too, I, I'm, you know, you're talking to taxpayers too.
I'm just saying that I'm just here to represent a little bit of Angie, I didn't think it was gonna be this whole big thing either, so I don't know all the things exactly. I'm just gonna be honest with you, I've only been there a year, back from six years before that, so I'm coming back into play, so I'm doing my best. So if you have a little more questions, like your approach.
Yeah, we're not, we're not directing, it's not anything personal, don't.
No, I'm not picking it personal, I'm just trying to tell you, that what I know is all I can tell you, cause of where I'm at in my position, okay? Not that I'm not planning to, to know a heck of a lot more, so, chess play on the.
Yeah, I saw some hands up, uh.
Just a simple question, so how come we can't get provided by the office, our land goes up, not counting the house, it's just the land, wanna show us the sales?
We can show you, we can show you.
They can.
Show twenty, and I wanna see how many sold on our side that didn't go to a trust fund, that went to somebody that actually works there.
That's true, I wanna see, cause those trust funds are a big, big sale.
Well, yeah, that place out by us was a trust fund, sold for twelve hundred fifty dollars an acre on grass. He put Buffalo out there, ate it to the ground and left, and is trying to resell it.
So is that an arms length sale?
I don't know if it's one of R C S's an arms length sale.
I wonder if that's an arms length.
Stuff we need to ask is.
I have them, come down and, come down and get them, I'll give you.
Jenny, you had, you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
Uh, cause I would like to know historically, I know, and I can only speak to a residential. But we've been between ninety-two and a hundred, but we've al- I think have always been right around that ninety-two mark. Is there some reason that we are now up at ninety-five?
That's what I was asking.
Ag is, was, I don't know what Ag.
I don't know what to tell you.
Now it seems like we're on the high side of Ag, so why are we not down at the lower numbers? I mean, I just.
That's where we always used to say that, I remember that for years.
With the Saunders County.
That's the problem, we just.
Okay, hang on, just one at a time, so I can.
Little state selling down there like cupcakes, but I asked her specifically on residential, and she says, I'm only at ninety-two, and that's all I'm going.
Okay.
Well, I would agree that the lower in that range that we can keep it, that ought to be our goal.
That's true.
Um, it ought to be to keep it low, and, um, there's, we're doing our constituents a major disfavor if we're trying to push the high limit of them, that don't seem right.
People here going to the school boards, they're seventy-eight percent of the taxes are.
The, the super tenants ought to be here when we have our.
Good, good luck.
Yeah, but they should be, they should explain to the taxpayer how that money's being spent. We only got twenty percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-two percent that we're spending here, and we have to explain to every taxpayer. And I think that, uh, these super tenants ought to be here.
And remember, we're dealing with valuation, and then there's that other equation of mill levy.
Mill levy, and that's where they.
And, um.
That's where that pink card comes in.
Yeah, that big pink card, but, you know, what I found was that, that big pink card, by the time we, we have that meeting, it's kinda done, it's too late. And, um, but what I did hear a couple government entities say at that meeting that I didn't like, was, well, we've never changed our mill levy.
No, they didn't advise they can get it.
Yeah, well.
Which maxed out.
Well, we vote on those things.
Go up thirty percent, and they don't change their mill levy, then they just got a windfall of money, and, um.
Say that in the next public, joint, public hearing too, cause they said, we, our values, our task, tax ask went up because values went up, not, we lowered your mill levy for you.
And I did.
Colleges, they did a change, a college here, but I don't know what that's gonna do for us.
I don't know what it's gonna look like either.
But the schools have a big part of our problem, but, you know, we've gotta vote on those things, we really do.
And I, I was at that meeting, I did not stand up and say anything, but I will this next time.
Me too.
Thank you.
And, um, I sure trust Ms. Lisa, you did a good job last year of keeping us below the, um, increase to have to be part of that pink slip meeting, but, um, I, obviously, I'll, I'm gonna be there, but I will speak up if we hear that same rhetoric of, well, we've never increased our mill levy. Well, you don't have to when these valuations are doing what they're doing.
When we're raising the county thirty percent, you don't have to change anything, you just leave it for when.
When is, when is the next regional governance?
Hmm, August.
I think we, uh.
Third, we skip, we're skipping July.
We're going to August, right.
But it's normally monthly, isn't it?
Yes.
And that's not an open meeting, that's.
It's by invite.
By invite, but that's where, that's where this has to go, is, is to talk to the other taxing entities and say, and we need the public to show up at their meetings, I'm not gonna show up and criticize school board at a, at a, in a town that I don't live at, live in, but I will show up in the town that I live in, and I'll criticize them, or encourage them to look at their levy, you know? This, property values going up is a good thing.
The taxes just.
But, but the government, the local governments need to, uh, act, um, reasonably, responsibly, and, and lower the levies.
If we would raise everything in this county five percent, you'd have more money than we want to do it.
Can I ask a question, am I right that I'm hearing for the Scotts Bluff schools, I don't know if it's Scotts Bluff, but ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, all, all have a, a, a principal for each class, is that true?
I don't think.
Same with the middle schools.
What?
Same with the middle schools.
Oh, no, okay.
For each class.
I don't think that's right.
Yeah, for each class.
Each grade level.
Each grade level. Ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth.
For every grade level?
Yes.
That's their title?
Well, I think the teachers ought to be paid, be paid that.
Assistant principals.
Oh, for each building, not for each grade, I mean, so you got one in high school?
No, for each grade.
Children in school here?
I have children in school here.
You have two?
And what did they say, is that true?
Yeah, they just hired school. They just hired, my, my daughter's going to the sixth grade, and I just met with the sixth grade principal.
Because you went to the, you're going to the middle school's principal?
No, it's, we're, we met both, we met the middle school overall principal, and the principal for the sixth grade.
You'd have to give names.
I have to ask one.
Janet.
I don't, I don't know if that's happening.
I'd say, yeah, that's, that's not for us to debate.
Carrie, thank you for, I mean, for taking the heat.
Sorry I couldn't answer everything, I tried.
Well, well, we're, we're not done yet, we're not.
Okay.
Just a quick, just a quickie, Carrie, uh, I had a couple of my constituents talk to me the other day that they had a very pleasant experience when we went to the assessor's office. And I asked them, which employee was it, and they said it was Carrie, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
There was, I saw a hand up back here somewhere.
So, like, if landowners here that were, we're just wanting to know, do we stand a chance in hell to protest to win? If we don't, we're not gonna waste your time.
Okay, do me a, can you do me a favor, will you come down to my office and let me give you the sales and see if we got it? We don't have that one, you know, on our list.
Once you come up and get on record here for us, would you, please? I, I, I hate to bug everybody about that, I'm sorry.
No, Steve Jobin, and I've talked to Ken and Russ a couple of times, but I guess what we're after is, is the farm and the ranch people, do we stand a chance to win on a protest? If we do, we'll spend our time, send you a book this big like we did a couple of years ago, and if we don't stand a chance, we're not gonna waste your time. We're on your side, that's what you gotta remember, is we don't like what's going on either.
The, the, the pat answer that we've had for twenty years, at least that's how long I've been on, that if you own a land in Lyman, or you own a land in Minutair, it's all the same, and you're being treated equally. May not be right, may not be what you want, but you're being treated equally, that's the job of Board of Equalization. Now, that doesn't say, that doesn't say that you did that, that you can't say, I don't think this is correct.
Four D or three D class land is not the same as one.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
And I know you worked with us that last time, but how does four D land, or three D land, like Mark and wherever you live, go up the same as one D land, or one A land? It's not the same.
Did it go up by percentage, or did it go up?
I had, I had it all over from twenty-something to sixty, so it went up all over. So we're not, we're not mad at, you guys, we just wanna know if we have a chance to win, we'll do the work.
Carrie, I might ask a question, if, if in a protest, if Mr. Jobin brings in uh, 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 proof of what his land, what his soil is, does he have, does he have a chance of getting that lowered?
I'd say yes, I mean, if he can find that, if his soil.
John White will help all of us do.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's, that's what I wanted to hear, because for years, we've always heard, if it's here, it's the same there, or whatever it is. But if it's not right, that doesn't make it right, that doesn't make it right, that's my point.
We'll do the work, but I mean, you're gonna get a book.
That's okay, that's okay.
I would only tell you this, and I, I think anybody that comes here and protests, um, has a, in my opinion, a fairly high percentage chance of something being adjusted. In my opinion, what I have seen in front of this Board of Equalization is I would venture to tell you ninety to ninety-three percent of the people get some kind of a relief somehow. There are a few that don't, but what I see happening here is many, many people get relief one way or the other, may not be everything you want, may not be the percentage you want, but we're all in the same boat.
The very large operators just swallow and go on, it's the mediocre, normal people.
Exactly, exactly.
A wine rice, like you picked up, it sucks for them too, but it's different for them than it is somebody that's mediocre.
And, and, and Mark's, Mark's absolutely right, and those people that are getting relieved have furnished us the information that we're asking for. The soil, the comparables, the, the, the whatever it is that we need to have to show that they have not been treated equally. That's what we're doing that week, we're a Board of Equalization, to make sure you're not being treated any differently than anybody else. And we'll fix it, that's our job, or we'll try to fix it, I'll put it that way.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just, I got a question, I think I know the answer to it, but if, what, what's the best soil out there?
One.
One, so if.
One A is the best one.
One A.
So if we, if we're, you know, changing values on land, you know, are we, are we dividing those one A sales into their own market and dividing the fours into their own market? Are we doing that, or, or is, if, if the one A is skyrocketing, is that dragging up the four?
Well, it has to be.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, because grass is grass, you know, like.
There's no, there's a lot of.
No, there's, 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 there's difference.
You know, you know.
That's why we're here.
But we don't, because we know what to do again.
Well, again, Steve, and, and I, and I can't stress this enough, if you don't feel you're being treated equally, that's what we wanna know. Just prove it to us, that's all we ask, that's all we ask, we'll make whatever adjustment legally that we can make. We'll do the best we can, we may be here an extra week, but you know what, so be it, that's what we get the big bucks for. I'm sorry, Ashley.
I wanna say that if you guys have questions about your land, just please stop into the office, the marketing department, and we will.
You work for John?
Tim?
Tim, yeah, Tim, yeah.
Yeah, they're very, they're very, they're very good about helping you.
Yeah, yeah, so if you have any questions, just come in and we'll.
Those guys, those guys are excellent to lay that stuff out and tell you. Good, as long as you understand, we're, we're kinda all, all on the same side here, we want what's best.
Against what's going on, we just wanna know if we have changed, if we have changed, we're gonna do the work.
Good.
It's a lot of work, it's a lot of work for you two.
Yeah.
Lot of work to do this.
It is, it is what it is, again, Carrie, thank you for, for taking the hits here, but uh, and we don't mean to, to hit you. But we have questions, concerns, that, that we've been getting for a couple of weeks now. And we may have to do this again prior to protest, I don't, I don't know. Okay? Okay, uh, we will, let's see, old business, continued discussion regarding energy efficient formula grant through E E C B G. Who's doing that?
I put, you put that on my plate, I said I do, I don't have an update for you.
No updates there?
I put it for me, I took it to the clerk workshop and spoke with other clerks. They say that it's the ten most populous counties, am I okay? Okay, um, nobody knew anything about it, but of the two or three that I was able to get a hold of, uh, it was a cold call on my end, so I'm guessing that maybe other clerks didn't recognize who was calling. So I'll be working with them to see if we can all work through what we need to do. I think all we need to do is get the pre-application that we're interested in it by the twenty-eighth, but I'm not positive, so. Just in speaking to the other clerks, just.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, uh, public comments, is there anybody, everybody left? Anybody else have anything in the public to, to bring to the board this time? If not, we'll move on to board and staff reports, start with the board, Russ, you have anything?
Like I said, uh, they're doing that road uh, between Steve, uh, between Henry and Lyman, and they're getting that one rolling. Looking really, really good, getting some updates, you know, roads are looking a little pitted. Uh, still got a lot of, lot of roads that need a lot of repair out in the country, there's still a lot of, a lot of roads that need blade, blade work and gravel, so.
Mike?
Uh, continue to meet with uh, different fire uh, agencies and uh, valley ambulance and the nine-one-one people to work out some of the issues they have. Things are improving a lot, but they have a long ways to go, and then last weekend, we had a uh, national sanction tracking class out here in Geering for the first time in Nebraska. Brought in people from Montana, Wyoming, Colorado, uh, we'll probably possibly do again next year. Which, these trackers are an asset to emergency management and law enforcement. Uh, they're another piece of the pie when it comes to public safety. In fact, there's only two certified trackers in the state of Nebraska, myself and Larry Martin. And so we travel to different states now and then, but it's just another asset we have out there. Of course, when these classes come in, it brings a lot of people, of course, there's money for hotels, food, lodging. We use caterers to, to feed the people, and we got really good feedback as to enjoying the community, enjoying the sights and sounds, and, and the tracking out the Wildcats was pretty tough due to the weather. It was a good, good experience for them, and I'm sure they'll wanna come back.
Okay, thank you, Mike, uh, several of my canceled, my, my meetings were rescheduled that I go to during that week, but I did go to a region one. Uh, there was a concern brought up by one of the commissioners about uh, staffing at the region one office. There are several people that work from home, uh, his, his particular board was concerned about it. They weren't sure whether, whether they were going to fund it anymore, because they had some issues where people actually went to the building and nobody was there. And they were going to talk about it and uh, get back with everybody, I said I didn't realize that there wasn't anybody in the building type. I had to have to use the facility, so uh, they're gonna be discussing that, and I'll report back once we get something on that. Some of them are more of a referral, and they don't need to be face to face with somebody. Some of them may be, but we didn't know who, who they were actually talking about, but I'll report that back once I, once I get a little bit more on it for you. Okay, Mark?
No, I, I don't have anything.
Charlie?
Um, well, you guys heard from tourism tonight, so that's all exciting, and then uh, the, uh, the first of the two bike races happens this weekend, um, it's called the Route du Rendezvous, expecting six hundred to seven hundred uh, cyclists in town for that, um, and then it was just announced that the Kattelman's Ball is coming back to the Panhandle. Um, be here in Scotts Bluff County this time, uh.
Shift farms.
Shift farms, so, um, the last time they were down in Banner County out here, um, I was working at the Hampton Inn, man, that was, it was an impressive group of people. Um, so that's gonna be, uh, be a boon for the local economy again, and um, I guess regarding that region one stuff, you know, all that work from home started during COVID, and, and um, we had we fu, we fund that, right, so we have a representative on that board and, and um.
Eleven, eleven counties.
Eleven counties fund that, and I, I strongly feel that that building is a drain on that, on that entity's budget. Um, they need to, they need to staff the office, but they should look into getting into a smaller building. And when I was on the region one board, I mentioned that multiple times, and they, they just have some uh, bad memories of trying to sell that building uh, in downtown Scotts Bluff. Um, and it's almost like they, they don't wanna just cut their losses, you know, if we could just say, if we could just, they say, well, we're, we're never gonna sell this building, this thing, you know, would be too difficult to sell, and we're gonna lose money by selling this building. Well, I think the, the real loss in money is the continued occupancy of that building that they're in right now. If they could get into something smaller, um, I think it would be uh, really beneficial to region one as a whole and to the counties that fund region one, um, you know, one thing we haven't really done in the past is, is really kinda talk as a board on, on how we want our representative to, to represent us on, on boards, and I'm wondering if, if that's maybe something we should start doing, you know?
And, and you're right, I, I thought about that as a work session sometime, uh, because we all sat on four or five other boards uh, that we're representing the county.
Yep, and I think really the only board we've ever kind of had a consensus on is uh, T C D. I think generally we have the same feelings towards T C D and, and, you know, want to see that working in the, in a, in a direction that is, um, well, I just think we kind of have a consensus there, so I wonder if that's something we could do with, with these other boards that we're on.
Well, we said, you know, we said, you know, I said on the, on the Kaplan board, there's a lot of money, I mean, there's a ton of money goes through that operation. And they're a big operation, I'm still learning, absolutely still learning how all that works, I'm getting better at it. Uh, 'cause I have to, 'cause nobody else wants to take the job, but uh, that's a whole nother issue. Yeah, go ahead and laugh, 'cause I'm gonna just.
Well, then, you know, like the airport.
I took the airport for you, so.
Multiple things.
Give you a little break, man.
Yeah.
You know, I think there's a lot of things with the, with the airport too, that, and, and are we ex officio there also?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but you know, there's just, you know, some of the comments in the meeting tonight were like, uh, you know, we're working on that, or, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but I think, I think maybe we could benefit from some more.
And I think that's the only one that we're ex officio, I believe.
T C D, we're ex.
T C, yeah, T C D, we are ex officio, right.
Yeah, but I mean, that's just.
But I've, I've always been an advocate of these, of these work sessions where we can just sit and talk and, and, and visit about these boards or, or how we're doing as a board, the different things that we can do to make our board better, and, and that's, and that, that, that's part of it. And I think we need to do that, I really do, 'cause a lot of times, the only time we ever talk is when we're here. But I'm all for that.
I think that's all I have.
Okay, staff, please say anything?
When are you gonna s- um, schedule this emergency meeting? How many days do you have to have in advance?
Kelly? We're on, today's the twentieth, how many days do we need? We can do it over lunch hour or something, if that, what works good for you on your job, Charlie, lunch hour?
It's uh.
You're just busy all the time, aren't you?
I can make it work.
With new publication, all I really, really know about is my deadline for Mondays, my list is downstairs. Um, to have a meeting next Monday, my deadline is passed today. Uh, today, if we'd have had our meeting yesterday, I could, I still got you guys one.
Can we do it next Tuesday?
It, it doesn't have to be a Monday, maybe.
Tuesday?
I mean, like, do you, can I just find out?
The soonest.
Yeah, the soonest and see if it works for you guys, or what do you want me to do?
Yeah, I'm like, I'm gonna be gone till Sunday, so.
So you could have it as soon as next Tuesday, maybe.
At, at noon, are we talking?
Well, we gotta be careful of public, because of, there's only three publications now, too.
So the Star Herald's current publication schedule is hampering county business?
Stop it, so on, I, my deadline, like, I typically get it done on Monday, but my deadline, I believe, is Tuesday at noon, it's published on Thursday.
It's an emergency meeting, does, does that change the rules?
I don't rem, the statutes have changed enough, I can't answer that right here, right now.
I think there is a difference, if we're an emergency meeting, we can call an emergency meeting.
How is it an emergency?
Yeah, I don't see an emergency.
It has to be done before budget.
Right, has to be.
Well, we've got time to get it done before budget.
We can do that.
Fiscal year.
So set it at your first, your earliest possible date to meet the deadlines, the publication deadlines. Set it at your next possible date, if that's Tuesday, if that's Wednesday, whatever.
And then what time of day did we?
As soon as you can.
Soonest date, okay, what time of day did you say?
Noon.
Is noon okay with everybody?
Yeah, I have, if you're.
I'm okay with it.
If you're looking on the twenty-eighth, I have the doctors at one-thirty, but we should, we should be done by then, hopefully. We go past that, she's all yours, Mark.
I hope they're all.
We got the Star Herald right now.
You've had your public hearings, you just need to take your action.
I think it has to go to the Star Herald, I think it has, is that what you said, Star Herald?
Yeah, aren't they right here right now, that'll be in the Star Herald.
Okay, all right, let's just, let's just set it up, let's set it up for the twenty-eighth at noon.
Okay.
Star Herald, you got your notice. Just a thought.
Well, hopefully we can make that work, if not, she'll give us the next.
Scott, you got your notice, buddy.
And I'm gonna have to ask Kelly to run a check for Motorola, 'cause they're kind of not giving me answers right now. So maybe we can plan that on the same day you can sign.
Do that, okay.
Could you? Get that overnight.
That's a big boy check?
They're not gonna let me do a big boy check, that's a big problem, so.
Do they know we pulled the other one?
What?
Do they know we pulled the other one?
Oh, yeah, they, the big, big check got pulled right now, 'cause right now Motorola is telling me, oh, you're on a lease, you can only pay the lease amount. And it's like, oh, shoot, except Heather's making beaucoup amounts of money on the intro, on, like, getting interest on it, so maybe we'll be okay. That makes me sleep better at night.
That's good.
But it just sucks, that's not what we were told.
I'll comment on that, I sent you guys the reports, but I had a T note that matured last month, so with our interest um, on the T note and the rest of our interest, we made over a hundred thousand dollars in interest last month.
Last month, month. Yeah, so maybe we should just make that our plan, right, just keep it, let's make some interest.
So what kind of, what is some of your best rates you're getting right now?
I'm getting over five percent with um, N P A P A B.
Okay, Lee, you have anything else, Lisa?
That's all I can do, so.
Ashley, do you have anything? Heather?
Probably treasures workshop out here last week, we had um, about eighty treasures from our precious state. Most of them had never, a lot of them had never been this way, they were very impressed with the tourism staff. Um, Brenda and Earl were great um, tour guides, and we went to the monument, the legacy of the plains, the Midwest Theater, and the flyover of the port, um, a lot of the pictures that you're seeing on Facebook of the, the monument with the statues, all the, the pink and blue skies, are pictures that my collectors took, and they got posted on Facebook, so we had a very good turnout.
Good, very good, thank you, Kenny, do you have anything else that you wanna bring up? No, yes, or, or Carrie, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking Kenny, I'm sorry, started with a K, I was partially correct. Okay, all right, Kelly, do you have anything?
I went to clerk workshop last week, it's really good, and I'm forwarding the information I think might be useful to Lisa to, as I catch back up.
Yeah.
All right, anything on legislation, nothing's going on right now, okay, word adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Kelly, what, what'd you want me to do, do we need to sign this one, Kelly?
Hang on, please, I don't know what you have.
With a note on it? There was a note on it?
I, you already signed it for me.
Okay.
Did you sign Texas corrections?
Yes, they're up here. Okay.